Welcome everyone to the June 5, 2012 Shakopee City Council Meeting. I call the meeting to order at 7:02. Kim, could you please take the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Punt?
Here.
Counselor Lehman?
Here.
Counselor Clay?
Here.
Counselor Whiting?
Here. Mayor Tabke? Here. All stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
None from staff, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone from council? All right, I will entertain a motion. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded by Counselor Clay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number four A, presentation by Centerpoint Energy Community Partnership Grant.
Mayor and council, several weeks ago, the city was notified that it was successful in receiving a grant from Centerpoint Energy, which will be used by the police department. Mark Spanton of Centerpoint is here tonight with Chief Tate to make the presentation.
Mr. Spanton?
Thank you. My name is Mark Spanton, and I'm the Senior Sales Consultant with Centerpoint Energy, and I'm here tonight to present the city a check for $2,500 that will be used to purchase two solar -- it's a long title -- two solar-powered interactive driver feedback signs for the police department to increase roadway safety and driver awareness. So maybe I can get a picture with Jeff and the mayor?
(laughter)
Give her our calculator.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. That is great news and will go to great use, so I appreciate that. That is wonderful. Item number four B, County Road 21, County Road 101 Project Awards from Scott County.
Mayor, members of the council, Mitch Rasselson and Lisa Fries are here from Scott County to present some awards they have received for the County Road 21 Project, which actually was the county project of the year and for the state of Minnesota, and County Road 101, which was recently done last year. So I'll turn it over to Mitch for presentation.
Thanks, Bruce. Just want to take just a couple minutes of your time to formally recognize the county and city's collaboration and joint work on a couple of award-winning projects in the city. As you're well aware, we had a lot of things tore up last year and did a lot of work, and a couple of the projects won multiple awards, and so we wanted to come tonight and present the plaques to the city, kind of recognizing your participation and recognizing those awards. And then I have our application submittal for the County Engineers' Project of the Year Award. It has a lot of information about the 21 Project, so I'll leave that to be passed around, and you can look through that, and then that keeps my presentation a lot shorter.
Thank you, Mitch.
Just a couple of notables on the 21 Project. It was a project that was first initiated in 1990 with the start of the scoping and environmental work, and it took 18 years to get from that point to the start of our project, and 17 years to just get through the environmental process. So it was quite an undertaking just to get to the point where we could do a design and start the project. As Bruce mentioned, it won the 2011 Minnesota County Engineers' Project of the Year Award. It's the County Engineers Association. It's my peers that give out one award a year for the best project in the state, and this project won that award. It also won the 2011 American Concrete Pipe Association Project Achievement Award for Use of Concrete Pipe, and that's a national award, and only one award nationally is given out, and the 21 Project also won that award. So those two are pretty prestigious awards. We're really, really proud of those. It also won a 2012 American Council of Engineering Companies Honor Award and a 2012 Minnesota Society of Professional Engineers Merit Award. We've also been asked to speak at multiple conferences on different aspects of the project, on the concrete pipe work, on the, kind of, the coordination and the water management, stormwater management piece. If you've been out there, you've probably noticed there's a lot of ponds, pedestrian amenities. So a lot of things on that project that we, both the county and the city, are being recognized for the innovation, the size, the quality of the project. And while I'm talking, I've got a list of the project team. It's easier to show the list than it is to read it because it's really long. All significant players in the project would like to at least recognize, as well as the city, SRF Consulting, and specifically Nancy Frick, who worked on the EIS in the preliminary design of the project, and then WSB, and specifically Don Sterna, who was the design engineer on the project. A lot of work and a lot of high-quality work. And it wouldn't be a presentation by an engineer if we didn't have a few statistics. So just a couple of big numbers. There were -- there was over 1.4 million yards of earth excavated for the project. There was 166,000 square yards of concrete pavement that equates to approximately 28 football fields the concrete paving on the project would have covered. 75,000 board feet of timber was reclaimed. That's over 3,300 trees. For those who have fireplaces, it's 206 cords of lumber that were taken off the project. Over 1,000 trees were replaced. 60,000 cubic yards of base, gravel base. There was 32,000 linear feet of concrete sewer pipe. That's over six miles of sewer pipe. 550 manholes and inlet structures, one wildlife crossing and two pedestrian crossings, and 50 acres of right-of-way were acquired. So a lot of, kind of, big numbers and big accomplishments to get to that. The second project I'd like to just take a minute to talk about was also a great partnership with the city, and probably as significant as the 21 Project was the 101 Project on Main here in downtown Shakopee. That was a project that certainly didn't take as long as the 21 Project, but the process that was chosen to work up to a preferred alternative, and what we ultimately built was actually a 16-month process that we went through with a lot of public involvement and a lot of meetings and a lot of business meetings. And I think it was probably the most successful part of the project because it built really solid relationships that we utilized throughout the project. We got a lot of good input from the businesses in the area. It was actually the businesses through that process that made the determination it was better to close the road during construction than to do it under construction. Just can't say enough about the cooperation that we got from the city's businesses and the business leaders as well as the council. It was not, you know, an easy process to get through, but we really -- when we got done, I think we got a great project, and I think everybody, for the most part, is pretty happy with the project. So that project won a 2012 American Council of Engineering Companies Honor Award. It won a 2012 Minnesota Society of Professional Engineers Merit Award. And Chris Cromie is here from Bolton and Mank. He was the project business liaison and the project manager for Bolton and Mank. They led the public involvement process and worked with WSB on the design. And we, he and I, although he'll be going and I won't, have been invited to present the public involvement portion of this project at the Institute of Transportation Engineers Transportation Research Board Midwest meeting in Chicago at the end of the month. Be presenting the, kind of, the process that was followed as a model for working with the public and working with the businesses and utilizing a business liaison. So just want to formally thank the city for the participation. A couple of great projects. Another project that we did was the 4217 Project, which I think turned out well, just no awards. So with that, thank you, and stand for questions.
Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, I think it would be appropriate to have some recognition for Mr. Cromie as a business owner. I was there, working through the issues with him, and substantially helped throughout the process, and I appreciated that as a business owner, and I'm sure many others did. There was a lot of tough decisions and tough issues, and it's always hard when your business is hard to get to, and, you know, the decisions were made and issues were addressed, and he went, in my opinion, you know, a little above and beyond what some would have done to alleviate a lot of the issues. So I appreciate that.
Anyone else? In 30 seconds or less, can you say what a concrete pipe award would be for?
It was for the variety of pipe that was used on the project. Not only was it your typical round storm sewer pipe. We had really large box culverts that were used as pedestrian crossings and wildlife crossings. We had specialized lined pipe for the MCES sewer line, and we actually laid the pipe in the wintertime, but laid an oversized pipe so that the actual pipe carrying the effluent could be laid inside that pipe. So we didn't have to -- there was 40 feet of fill placed over that pipe. So it was a way to ensure that we wouldn't get any settlement because the grades were so strict that we had to adhere to. We couldn't work with any settlement. So again, another innovative. We have high-flow, low-flow pipe usage where you have, on the outlet, two different levels of pipes to carry, you know, everyday water and then the high-flow water. Just a really wide variety of pipe use on that project.
Thank you. Counsel Whiting?
Just a comment. Congratulations on the project. We appreciate that. Good work.
Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number five, consent business. Another couple of items to remove. Mr. McNeil?
Mr. Mayor, if we could remove item 5A -- excuse me, 5F8 and 5F10. Those both relate to some scheduling of city council meetings. In 5F9, I had a request today from the prospective donor of that land regarding the property taxes. I'd like to discuss that. I believe because each of these will not have people in the audience in deference to the folks who are here, we can just move these to administration and their general discussion and not have to do it as part of the remove from consent section.
Okay.
We'll do it at the end of the meeting rather than during the middle.
From council, any other items to remove?
There's just the three items, then?
Yeah, 5F8, 9, and 10.
Okay.
Counsel Lehman?
I'll move the consent agenda as modified.
Seconded by Counsel Whiting. Mr. McNeil, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 5A1 authorizes a hiring of Alyssa Frey for the Human Resources Technician position at Step 8 of Grade 6 of the 2012 Non-Union Pay Plan upon successful completion of required screenings. 5A2 authorizes a hiring of Edna Nicholas for the position of Secretary of the Administration Department of Step E of Grade 4 of the 2012 Non-Union Pay Plan, also based on successful completion of required screenings. 5A3 adopts a resolution amending the personnel policy for the employees of the city of Shakopee. 5C1 declares various miscellaneous property and bicycles to be held by the Shakopee Police Department to be surplus property and authorizes proper disposal through auction. 5C2 authorize the staff within the police department to use DWI4, which your funds to purchase a digital automatic license plate resignation -- recognition system from LSAG North America for $19,400. 5E1 adopts a resolution approving plans and specifications, ordering advertisements for bids for the Upper Valley Drainage Way and Trail Improvements Project Number 2011-3. 5E2 approves a quote of $17,563 submitted by RV Communications System of Purim, Minnesota, to bring communications fiber to the L16 Sewage Lift Station site for system monitoring purposes. 5E3 accepts a petition from Atwood Street residents and direct staff to consider the project in 2013 CIP, to have the street reconstructed and sanitary sewer replaced. 5F1 authorizes bills and pass-throughs to be paid in the amount totaling $1,728,618.22. 5F2 approves minutes of the May 1, 2012 city council meeting. 5F3 authorizes the renewal of on- and off-sale 3.2 malt liquor licenses for the period from July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013 for 18 applicants listed in the agenda packet. 5F4 authorizes renewal of liquor licenses for the period July 1 through June 30 to the 28 applicants listed in the agenda packet. And 5F5 approves the application grants an on-sale wine license to 483, Inc., 114143 Canterbury Road for the same period. 5F6 accepts with regret the resignation of Daryl Cheek from his position on the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission. And 5F7 authorizes the disposal of all city's permanent paper records once they are scanned in the city's electronics records management system. 5F8, 9, and 10 were removed from consent.
Beautiful. Thank you much, sir. Any discussion on those items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number six, recognition of involved citizens by city council. I know we've got a couple folks here tonight. Don, you want to start?
Yes, please. Hi, my name is Don Buhan, and I'm the Chair of Beyond the Yellow Ribbon South of the River. Any of us, any of you guys heard of us? Okay, it's not unanimous. Those who haven't completed our job. We are now a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Scott County-wide, and that includes each of the cities. So congratulations, Shakopee, you're one of the cities that is a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon city. So that's something to be very proud of. We are an organization. We are a nonprofit comprised of all volunteers, and we honor, serve, and support all military and their families, all branches, all eras. In order to become a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon city, you have to involve all facets of the community, which includes city leadership, K through 12, medical, faith communities, businesses, and judicial. So I am here to seek some, some help from you folks to see if we can get some, let's say, buy-in. We want to get some city signs put up in each of the counties, or each of the cities and the county, and so I'll leave a piece of paper that is from MINDOT and the National Guard because they're the ones who send out the signs. And we'd also like to seek some, like, a liaison from the city leadership, just somebody we can communicate with. We've been doing that with each of the other cities, so that Tuesday night is the same night as we have our general meeting, and so, you know, if we can communicate that way. What we really would like to find out, Shakopee has the most veterans in all the cities in Scott County, and so we want to find out from Shakopee what we can do for those veterans. As you know, a lot of people are coming home. The Red Bulls are coming home, and these folks not only need support while they're deployed, but especially once they've come home and the reintegration process. So that's what our organization helps out with. We've been involved with different things. We had our first annual Military Appreciation Picnic last year in Lyons Park in Shakopee, and we'll be doing the same again this year. It'll be September 8. We do a lot of different things, including we served 1,500 service members ice cream a couple of weekends ago. We walk parades. We are out there increasing awareness and educating the public. We're working with Alina to put on a medical symposium. Last year, we had a community symposium. We go to the Fisher House, which is like the Ronald McDonald of the VA, and we go there every month, and we serve the families. We also are in the process of getting the military operation kids into the school systems, and so we're working with the school councils as well. So there's a couple of different things I spoke with the mayor about in regards to maybe having some magnets on the police vehicles, ambulance vehicles, that type of thing, again, to increase the awareness. We'll have a conversation with the police chief and see if they need any education. We have access to getting the for-some education as well, and what that comprises of is just helping them understand when a service member is dealing with a PTSD moment. These people are, some of these folks are very decorated, but they've been to war. We have sent them to war, and unfortunately, sometimes they come back and they have a hard time dealing with what has gone on, and so they need to be handled a little differently, and so some awareness for the police force as well as the docs. So we'll be working again at St. Francis with Alina. And also to see about getting some information distributed to the libraries, to maybe some hotspots in the city, and we'd like permission to do that. And also, too, we don't have a formal date yet, but we'd like to invite all the cities in September. We're going to give each of you your proclamation and work with you on city signage as well. So, and I am very open to any questions that you may have about our organization.
Thank you. Counsel Lehman?
A couple questions. Funding sources mainly come from where?
We fundraise. We also get some contributions from people who are just very generous, businesses. We have an annual golf tournament, which we fundraise. We just put on a garage sale, different things like that. We're all volunteers, and we're a nonprofit 501(c)(3), so...
Are you connected with the other groups of 501(c)(3)'s?
What do you mean?
Well, there's a, I actually chair one of them with a couple other folks, and there's a network of nonprofits that have a central contact, and they all connect and work together on various items that they're working on.
No, but I'd be very open to getting some information. That would be great.
Okay. And then collaboration with the VFW and American Legion?
We're very involved, yeah, with them.
More than a local level, I would assume? District level?
Not so much a district level, but definitely a local level. We have our meetings at the VFW in Prior Lake every month. We have our leadership meetings at the Legion and Savage. We're trying to get some of the other communities to, kind of, work together because, other than Savage and Shakopee, some of the other VFW and Legions aren't as active, and so we're trying to bring those members on board as well.
Very good.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much, Don, for all the work you've done. We've gotten to talk about a couple things, and what Beyond the Yellow Ribbon South of the River is doing is great and much-needed work, and so I really appreciate what you're doing. Mark, who will follow up on some of those items?
I will be in contact.
Okay.
All right, and I've got your contact information. And we've already spoken with Chief Tate about the magnets, and he's in favor of it, and we should be seeing some things happening. So that's wonderful. Thank you very much for being here. I appreciate it.
I will leave the city signage sheet, and then I'll maybe leave the brochures and business cards at the table, if that would be appropriate.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, I know we have one more. You guys are up.
Hello. Hi. So we were wondering if we could talk to you guys quick about backyard chickens? Who knows what that is or has heard of that before? Okay, good. So backyard chickens are...
Could you introduce yourselves?
Oh, yes. I'm Caitlin Dusick.
And I'm Maria Krebs.
We're seniors, or we were seniors at Shakopee Senior High School. Today was our last day of school, technically. And backyard chickens are chickens that you raise in your backyard for the sole purpose of egg production, and we were in our environmental ethics class, and this was our end-of-the-year project, and we decided to keep going with the idea even after school ended because it became, kind of, fun.
Yeah.
So we have some mock rules and a petition that we had at our environmental ethics project presentation night. Should I go give it to them now?
Sure.
Okay, so this is our petition. If you guys just want to pass it around. It only has 23 or 24 signatures on it?
23 signatures.
Signatures?
Yes.
And then 212 mock rules.
I'll do the first one.
Okay. So we, kind of, had some mock rules based on Bloomington and Prior Lake just recently, well, Bloomington more recently than Prior Lake just got backyard chickens, and since they're suburban in an area like us, we decided to base our rules, well, our mock rules, off of what they had. So some of the rules, I guess I can go to the main ones. No roosters because they crow and they can be considered a nuisance, because, you know, I don't know if you've ever heard a chicken crow, but they're pretty loud.
was our end-of-the-year project, and we decided to keep going with the idea even after school ended, because it became kind of fun.
Yeah.
So, we have some mock rules and a petition that we had at, um, our Environmental Ethics Project presentation night, should I go give it to them now?
Sure.
Okay, so, this is our petition, if you guys just want to pass it around. It only has twenty-three or twenty-four names on it?
Twenty-three signatures.
Yes. And then two hundred and twelve mock rules.
I'll do the buckthorn.
Okay. So, we kind of had some mock rules based on, um, Bloomington and Prior Lake just recently, well, Bloomington more recently than Prior Lake just got backyard chickens, and since they're suburban in area like us, we decided to base our rules, well, our mock rules, off of what they had. So, some of the rules, I guess I can go to the main ones. Uh, no roosters, because they crow and they can be considered a nuisance, because, you know, I don't know if you've ever heard a chicken crow, but they're pretty loud. And then, a maximum of three hens is kind of, I thought that was a good limit, because they're not too noisy if there's only three, and the waste production would be a minimum. And then, um, along with the waste, it should be disposed of daily to avoid, um, too bad of an odor, and along with the disposal of waste, it can be used as a fertilizer, if you dry it out, because then it doesn't smell, because it's really rich in nitrogen, which is super awesome for your lawn. And, let's see, um, this one too?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, another thing that we thought was kind of important is that eggs can't be sold for profit, so that then it doesn't compete with any markets or any, um, other stores, but we thought it would be fair if you could barter with neighbors, like, if she doesn't want to buy flour, I don't want to buy eggs, I can go to her for eggs and she can come to me for flour. So we thought that would be a pretty, not, like, I'm going to put, come out of business thing. Yeah, and then, if there's a suspected outbreak of any bird-related diseases, like the bird flu flares up again, for instance, um, chickens should be terminated immediately so that you yourself aren't at risk anymore than you would normally be for that sort of disease, and your neighbors also wouldn't be at risk. And then, one thing that we don't have on this rule, because we kind of edited it for our presentation night, was that you had to, all neighbors that touch your property line have to sign off on you getting backyard chickens, because it would directly affect them if you didn't clean it up or if they got too loud, and, yeah.
Okay, so you can...
Yeah, so I'll give you guys...
Okay, and I have another proposal, another thing that we did, we kind of did, like, a lot of different projects, and this one was about buckthorn removal, and it kind of deals with how in Prior Lake, they have this organization where you would call social, or...
Park services.
Park services, and they will loan you these things called wenches that helps you pull the buckthorn out of the ground if they're, like, really big trees. And we don't have an organization like that in Shakopee, so we had to use, like, manpower, and we thought that we could get more people to want to help solve the buckthorn problem if we had that organization. So it would be like, you would borrow it, and then as soon as you were done, you would give it back, kind of thing, and then we have a petition for that.
Could you explain a little bit more about your class?
Environmental Ethics and Ecology is a class, um, it's a block class, so you take it sixth and seventh hour, and it kind of makes you more aware of the place that you live in. Uh, Mr. Lozell, our teacher for environmental ethics, called it place-based learning. Like, I didn't know about buckthorn at all, like, I'd never heard that word. I didn't know Minnesota, like, Shakopee area had this many issues.
Yeah, after you hear all the issues, like, we all have to come up with different presentations, and after you hear all the issues, you are just, like, so overwhelmed that you're like, I don't even know if this is all going to work.
Didn't you say that was what you learned at the end?
Yeah, yes, near the end I decided, because he asked me why I wasn't, um, participating as much anymore and saying how we could fix it, it was just because I was getting so overwhelmed with all these different things, so, yeah.
It was a really useful class, it kind of made you more aware of the place you live in and how everything does affect everything, and then you can do little things to help out.
Perfect. And I know you've been speaking with Mr. Leek, correct?
A little bit, yes.
About things, okay. Um, if anyone from council has any questions, I don't want to get into discussion about either of these items, because that's, if it comes back to us for a different day, um, but does anyone have questions for the students?
Did you do, did you do any research on, on some of these restrictions to see how that...
The rules, yes.
How that would affect application, because a city lot of at least a half acre and forty feet from any property line would pretty much put you out of old Shakopee property parcels, so it'd put you on the outskirts.
Well, we kind of eyeballed, I guess, property line, we didn't really know it would be a good idea, but we thought half an acre, because, um, if you look at the rules, like, they can't be allowed to roam without supervision, but we wanted them to have room if they were let out of their coop, so we thought half an acre would be fair. Like, I live on, I think, a half acre, and I figured that was enough room, but I don't really...
There's also the neighbor issue, like, we don't want the neighbors nearby to have an issue with the chickens.
So, I mean, it's a mock rule, so it's totally open for editing and change.
Can be worked on.
If we go with goats, we could get a lot of these yards mowed too.
There you go. Councilwoman Whiting?
Little miniature farms in backyard.
I appreciate your activism, you know, that's great at your young age. Uh, my question, uh, you said the Bloomington and Prior Lake, uh, recently got in to doing some of this, uh, had you looked at any of the complaints there, anything like that that may have come back?
Um, no.
Most of their, um, so I'd assumed that all of the complaints that would be possible, we tried to come up with all the complaints that would be possible, and we told people to be as cynical as possible.
We asked our moms and everything.
Yes. And we asked them, like, what their complaints would be, and so we made up rules within, like, we looked at Bloomington and Prior Lake and all of their rules, and then we took our other complaints and made other rules for Shakopee as well, due to those complaints.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Wonderful, well, thank you very much for coming, I appreciate you presenting, and, um, we, how do we want to move forward with this?
With the contact numbers, we'll...
We've got your information, and we will be in touch, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? All right, moving on to item number seven, um, we will be having a public hearing in Economic Development Authority, and so, uh, Councilor Clay, would you please convene the EDA?
We'll convene the Economic Development Authority, June fifth, two thousand twelve.
Do you need to take a roll on everything?
You please make note of the roll?
Okay. Thank you, now I need a, uh, motion open, a public hearing for, uh, you want to do it at the same time? Okay. Go for it.
Mr. Whiting, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Motion by Whiting, seconded by Mr. Lehman. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Public hearing is opened.
For both, correct?
You need to do it for city council.
That's for the EDA.
Okay, uh, I need a motion to council upon.
I will make a motion to open the public hearing.
Councilman Lehman?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, passes unanimously, we are now in, uh, public hearing for proposed tax increment financing district number fifteen.
Commissioner Leek, thank you, mayor, members of the council, um, this is, uh, a public hearing to consider the TIF plan and contract for private development, as well as the issuance of a TIF note for the All, um, make sure I get this right, um, All Saints Senior Living, um, LLC project, which is located, or proposed to be located, on Independence Avenue at Thrush. In the audience this evening is Tom Denaway from Springstead, and when I finish my short introduction of the project, he has a presentation, you have a, a paper copy of it, on the details of the TIF plan. We also have from Kennedy and Graven with us tonight Martha Ingram, um, to answer any questions that we may have regarding those documents. Scott O'Brien, representing the project, is here as well. Other project type, as I think you know, is an eighty-unit senior, um, housing project with independent assisted and memory care living. It's proposed to be on three acres at the northeast corner of Independence and Thrush Avenue, on property that is currently adjacent to the Saks complex. Of course, the three-acre parcel would be subdivided out. The building size is approximately eighty-four thousand square feet. The total proposed amount of TIF is one million. The term of the TIF district is up to twenty-six years, although as, uh, as you may have guessed, um, if it comes in at the rate that is expected, that, uh, term may be less than twenty-six years. The trade-off for the TIF, uh, for the city is that the developer provides affordable housing, and in this case, the developer would provide twenty percent of the units, or sixteen units, to persons who are at fifty percent of the county median income. The criteria for granting assistance for a housing project are different than the criteria you've looked at in connection with the TIF for Sandmar, which is an economic development district. First and primarily, it's whether there is a demonstrated need for the housing in the community, whether the project will address the identified need, and if the assistance is provided, then they have to meet one of the two standards that you see there, and in this case, they propose to provide twenty percent of the units at fifty percent. I just want to note for you the land use and zoning considerations, I mentioned that this is currently a ten-acre parcel, it's zoned ag preservation, it is guided for single-family density development overall. Uh, the developer has made the application at this point to rezone the property to urban residential, and we've set the public he- hearing for that. They've also made the request for determination by the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, that the use that's proposed here and its impacts are similar to other uses permitted in the conditional use permit. If that determination is made by the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, then a CUP review would follow. With that, I'm going to bring up Mr. Denaway's presentation for you, and let him address some of the specifics about this proposal.
Commissioner Leek, can I ask you a question real quick?
You certainly can.
At one point, the R1B, I believe, was in question, as, if that was, if the project was too dense for R1B, is that no longer an issue, or is R1B okay?
That's not an issue, um, in that, in talking with the city attorney, uh, we concluded that it's only the independent living units that count in terms of residential density. The assisted and memory care units are not residential units per se. So, on that basis, I believe there were eight, um, independent living units, three acres for the site, so that's the thought process for the density being consistent with R1B.
All right, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, members of the city council, Economic Development Authority, my name is Tom Denaway, I'm with Springstead Incorporated. It's good to be back in front of you, it had been a couple of weeks since I'd been here, so, glad I can make it back. Tonight, I, as Michael mentioned, I am just going to do a quick overview of the Trident Housing Development District, uh, kind of dovetail into what Michael had laid out, and then just expand on a couple of the points related to the TIF. I know you guys have been over this a number of times, so I'll try to be brief. Uh, the purpose of the presentation is to provide an overview of the Shakopee TIF district, we're going to outline the major, or outline the development scenario, and then outline the major components of, of a TIF plan. We've gone over this with Sandmar as well, so it's a lot of the same features in the TIF plan are congruent based on each of the types of TIF districts. As Michael mentioned, this is a eighty-four thousand square foot unit, or a square foot project with approximately eighty units, a mix of senior and assisted living. The developers requested the city create a housing TIF district to assist with the project, and the purpose of that TIF, TIF district would be to fund public infrastructure and site improvement costs related to the development of the senior living facility. One of the things that's unique for a housing TIF district is that it has a term of twenty-five years from the date of first receipt of increments, so it's twenty-six years total, but in statute, you'll read it a lot of times, it's twenty-five years. As Michael mentioned, there are restrictions that apply to a housing district, in the case of a housing district, there has to be qualifications met in terms of the number of affordable units that are preserved for people of various levels of the area and areas median gross income. They either have to meet the twenty percent, uh, of units reserved for people whose income is fifty percent or less, or they have to meet the forty percent for people whose income is sixty percent or less. In this case, they're, the developer's proposing to meet the twenty percent requirement, which would reserve sixteen units. Additionally, to make sure that these projects don't have, our, our housing base, the statute requires that no more than twenty percent of the square footage of the building that's constructed with TIF assistance contain non-commercial or non-residential uses, they want to make sure that housing districts are for housing projects. And a couple of statutory findings that are made in approving a TIF plan are that the TIF plan will afford the maximum opportunity consistent with the sound needs of the city as a whole for development by private enterprise, that the TIF plan conforms to general plans for the development of the city as a whole, in this case, that, uh, the meeting of that statutory finding is contingent on the, uh, the appropriate zoning and land use planning that, uh, Michael just referenced, and finally, that the project will qualify as a housing TIF district. And additionally, the city has to make a finding in regards to the, the need for assistance, and that the development would not reasonably be expected to occur solely through private investment. This is what's known as the but-for test. In this case, we analyzed the development scenarios provided by the developer, we analyzed their operating performa, their sources and uses, their, their revenue, projected revenues and expenses, and we looked to determine that there is, in fact, a need for the, for the assistance on this project, and that it would be unlikely to occur without it. In the case of a housing district, what we're looking for is whether or not the, the affordable units are likely to be provided but for the assistance, it's a measure of, will this assistance provide the affordable units? And what we realized after reviewing the developer's performas, and what that performa illustrated, is that there is a significant difference in the annual operating revenue that they would receive if this project was all market rate versus what they would receive if this project had an affordable unit component. So therefore, what we determined is that the developer would be unlikely to provide the twenty percent of affordable units but for the TIF assistance. They will suffer a loss in revenue compared to an all-market rate unit, or all-market rate project through the, through the provision of the twenty percent of, uh, twenty percent of affordable units, but the, the TIF will provide an offset against that, but it will not completely fulfill that gap in revenue between market and affordable units, so, the TIF does, does help and does make that project more likely to occur with the affordable units than certainly would occur without the TIF assistance. So, based on that review, we did determine that but for the assistance, the project would not provide the affordable units within the, within the city. The budget that's in front of you is the tax increment revenue, that's the revenue side of the TIF plan budget, and the total tax increment revenue projected to be generated by the project over the full twenty-six years of the district is three point six million dollars. The expenses that are listed below are the expenses that are in the plan and that are for the, uh, for the project as proposed, and then it's site improvements and infrastructure costs of approximately one million dollars, interest payments of three hundred ninety, capitalized interest of eighty-five thousand, and then administrative expenses available to the city of three hundred sixty-four thousand. In addition to that, due to the project having a shorter repayment term than the full, or the pay-as-you-go note having a shorter repayment term than the full, or the full twenty-six years, we have budgeted the rest of that available TIF revenue for pooling for other affordable housing projects, if those other additional projects become available. One of the things statute provides is for excess TIF revenue to be used to fund other affordable pro, housing projects within the city, provided they're available and they also meet the requirements. And then finally, one of the statutorily required impacts that is shown in the TIF, that has to be shown in the, in the TIF plan, is the hypothetical decrease in the local tax rate if the development were to occur without assistance. In this case, you can see here, if this development occurred without the TIF assistance, that there would be minor decreases, decreases realized by each of the taxing jurisdictions and amounts that are shown. And finally, the developer has requested the assistance in the form of a pay-as-you-go note, this is similar to the Sandmar project, the developer will be financing all their costs upfront, they'll be receiving TIF reimbursement over time to repay that one million dollar principal amount, and the total amount of the reimbursement, of the principal amount of the reimbursement is the one million dollars. And currently, the projections require that, or the projections currently indicate that the repayment term is going to be approximately twelve years, but that's all subject to future tax rates, future market values, it could be longer or slower depending on how, how things play out in the future. Important to note is during the, during the term of the TIF district and during the term of the obligation, the developer's required to maintain the twenty percent affordable units for that entire term, and they will also have to report that they are meeting that requirement to the city on an annual basis as per the, the TIF statute. And with that, I'll turn it over to any questions.
Is that all right for the public to ask questions about these?
No.
Um, it's a public hearing, so, when, I'm sorry, who, I don't know who said that.
Uh, this will be Sean Nelson.
Yeah, in a, in a bit, we'll recognize public in a little bit.
Thank you.
Anyone have questions? Councilman Clay?
Tell me more about the two point eight million of the pooling, that money is excess tax increment over the twenty-five years, that's not being needed to pay off the bonds or other interest?
Uh, yes, correct, council member Clay, uh, that, the two point eight million that's projected is the remaining term of the TIF district, the revenue that'll be generated over the remaining term of the TIF district after the, after the pay-as-you-go note is projected to be paid off. Obviously, that number could fluctuate a little bit depending on the term that the repayment of the pay-as-you-go note takes, and that number, um, if the city so chooses, or if there are not available projects available at that time, at the time that, at the time the pay, original pay-as-you-go note is completed, the city can also decertify the TIF district at that point in time, and then turn and put the property back on the general tax rolls. So, the, the ability to use that money will, will be subject to the property meeting the affordable unit... that money will be subject to the property meeting the affordable unit requirements and that there are additional affordable housing projects available in the city with which that funding can be used for. So it's contingent upon there, but because our TIF budget and our TIF plan is showing the full 26 years, we have to account for that money because it could potentially be generated.
Councilor Punt.
And would that be utilized through creating another TIF district?
It would be, that money would be utilized if there are other affordable housing projects that are in place and the city are ready to become online in the city. Those projects could potentially be funded through that tax increment revenue at that time, but they have to be also be willing to meet the requirements of the affordable housing.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Do you have anything?
All right. Anyone from the public like to speak?
I would.
Please come up and introduce yourself.
Sean Nelson. Given that this TIF can't be adequately funded privately, and given the, I don't want me to be too frank, but I've seen a lot of affordable housing in Shakopee, especially as of the last decade or so. They're not exactly the safest, most manageable, most healthy places I've ever been to, especially the areas around my house. My question is, since we need to put taxpayer money into a project like this, and since by definition it will attract lower-income houses, which typically bring crime and other things with them, are these extra police expenditures and things like that calculated into the extra cost, and is this really an economically sound, excuse me, decision to make?
With that being said, do you know what the project is?
It's a housing project.
It's a senior living project?
Yeah.
So it's seniors?
Oh, I was in the beginning of the thing.
There you go. All right. I was just making sure you knew that that, it's not going to be a whole lot of policing there, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't know if a whole lot of seniors that need affordable housing are going to start committing crimes.
Right. I think, I think we're okay, but your concern is very valid, and I appreciate you coming forward.
I'm going to go back to my seat.
All right. Thank you for talking with us. All right. Anyone else like to speak with the public hearing? All right, President. Clay, would you like to close the public hearing?
No, I had a question. I'm not quite sure who to direct it to. I just wanted to get a sense of how much a typical housing unit per month, you know, does it cost as compared to the affordable amount per month? How many dollars per month is there? Is there the difference there?
Councilor Whiting?
At a full rate, in a similar, although different, city, Little Falls, I think it's, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, it's around $4,000 a month.
All right. Mr. O'Brien, do you want to comment?
This is for full care and nursing care.
Hello, everyone. My name is Scott O'Brien. I'm with Trident Development. Councilmember Clay, I'll address your question specifically, and I was kind of going to wait for the remainder of the public to get up and speak if they'd like before I answered another question that you had previously asked or attempted to answer it from last time we had the continuing meeting, and you had asked about what the kind of the average unit was, you know, how much TIF assistance do we receive on an average basis per location? And I spoke with Mr. Leake about that, and, you know, I attempted to put some numbers together, but it started to get to where there were so many variables in the funnel, I couldn't get them all to come together to say, this is the average, because like Councilmember Whiting just said, you know, we have a TIF district established in Little Falls, but the overall cost to develop in Little Falls was less. The cost to operate in Little Falls is less, and the gap between the market and the elderly waiver program in Little Falls is less. So the impact of a TIF package in a city like Little Falls can be much greater even though the actual figure is less on a per-unit basis. So it's a really, yes, sir.
Mr. Leake. Asking to be recognized by the mayor. Thanks. Another perspective on that question, and please, Mr. O'Brien, set me straight if I'm recalling this incorrectly, is I think during one of the conversations, and it may have been with the EDAC, the indication that either you or Mr. Fink gave was that elderly waiver here in Scott County may be about $3,800 a month?
No.
No? Okay. Maybe you can speak to that.
Sure.
And before you do, let me note that as a member of the sandwich generation, I have a lot of experience with care facilities here in Scott County with both a parent and a parent-in-law in them currently, and I will tell you that one of the facilities for full market rate private pay for memory care was on the order of $6,000. Another one was about $5,500 a month. So compared to elderly waiver, that would be?
I'll just take one step back quick and give everyone an overview of how the elderly waiver program works. It's essentially Medicaid, and it's reimbursed through the federal government, but it's managed at the core level by the state, and the state sets the rent component that a facility like this can charge. So the base rent is, we just got a raise, believe it or not, from the state, six bucks. So it's $870 a month. Then what happens is the operator goes in and meets with the county and negotiates with the county the service package revenue. Now, here's where it gets really difficult to explain, or not difficult to explain, but difficult to pinpoint how much that is, because Councilmember Clay and Councilmember Whiting both might be in an assisted living apartment right next door to one another. Maybe not next to each other. We don't want any problems.
He'd need to have the larger one.
At separate ends of the hall. But one might require a lot more assistance. They might require assistance with five different things a day. One might require it with three. So then what we do is someone from our management team, along with somebody from the county, negotiates what that service package revenue is going to be. So in, let's say, an assisted living situation, it might be 870 for your base and anywhere from 1,600 to initial 1,800 a month. And then in the memory, it might be 870 plus an additional 22 to 24. But if the market's 5,500 and you're getting 3,000, that's a $30,000 year difference just on that one unit. So now you can start to see where, as we were, as Tom alluded to earlier, that that spread starts to widen between the TIF assistance component and what we're providing.
What I'm looking for is some kind of a general assurance that by doing this, we're not saving somebody out of what might be a $4,000 per month expense, now it's only going to be 3,950. I'm assuming it's going to be something more significant than $50 a month that they're enjoying through this TIF.
Councilor Clay, I think in partial answer to that, savings only occurs because the individual in the care unit qualifies for elderly waiver, which means they don't have the income
That's right.
for market rate private pay.
They have to qualify for Medicaid assistance. So if they've got $70,000 a year from a pension, they're not, they don't qualify for EW. They're a market rate renter. It's the folks in our town that if we don't have these sorts of units reserved for them that don't have any money, have to go somewhere else. And this is a, this is hopefully going to be a really, I mean, it's going to be a nice facility. We have a nice facility in Little Falls. We, these elderly waiver folks are going to go into, we're going to take care of them in a nice facility. We don't have to worry about them turning into criminals.
So it's not a question of getting a discount on the monthly cost. It's a question of being able to be there at all?
Correct. And the discount isn't made by, we take part of the discount. The county comes up with the balance. The state comes up with the balance. Well, actually, to be fair, if they receive any social security, they have to contribute their social security to come up with that first, whatever it is, say it's $600 a month, and the state comes up with 270 to get them to 870. Then the county gets reimbursed from the state, and that is the service package revenue that's negotiated. But at the end of the day, if I have a census of residents and I have 16 that are on EW, the gap between what those residents would be providing or paying when they're on EW versus what they pay in market rate is anywhere from 1,500 to $3,000 per month per unit. So it's a substantial number.
Is that helping you through? Okay. Councilor Lehman.
What guarantee, what guarantee do we have that the taxpayer subsidy is going to Shakopee seniors in need? Okay. What guarantee do we have that the Shakopee taxpayer subsidy is going to Scott County seniors in need?
None.
Okay. So basically, we're going to take taxpayer dollars from Shakopee to subsidize low-income seniors with or without needs and from any walk of life in the country, I would assume.
Yes. And here's why that makes sense. 25% of the residents that move into a facility like this in any given city, even up in Little Falls, come back to Little Falls. They either moved away. Take my folks, for instance. They live in Arizona. They grew up here in Shakopee. My dad owned a business here for 30 years. So theoretically, if he comes back to Shakopee to live in this facility at some point, we're subsidizing a guy, but he did spend the bulk of his life here. Not to mention, I as a resident of Shakopee, or you as a resident of Shakopee, or you may want your mother or your father back here from Gilbert, Arizona. So yes, we are doing that, but what we're doing is most often, we're either bringing somebody back to their hometown, or we're bringing somebody to the hometown of their son, daughter, niece, nephew, whomever, because that's their closest loved one.
And if there's no vacancies?
Well, I have, by statute, I have to, I can't, I have to have those units sit open. So if I fill up, if I've got 80 units and 64 of them fill up tomorrow with market rate, the other 16 sent empty until I have, I can't rent them out to anybody else.
But once them 16 have occupants in them?
Yes.
Then where does grandpa go? He ain't coming back from Arizona anymore because there's no vacancy in the subsidized section. It's full.
Your point?
Correct.
Waiting list.
Waiting list. Okay. My point is,
We have a waiting list.
I've been taught over the years that when you give a subsidy out, you get something back in return for your community, and here we potentially could be subsidizing pretty much anybody from any walks of life and not necessarily the elderly of Shakopee.
How is that any different than the TIF and the tax payment we've already done, which doesn't, doesn't necessarily go to jobs that are specifically for Shakopee residents at that point? I mean, what's the difference?
We're getting a job base in Shakopee.
And this is different than a housing base? How?
What kind of job base are we creating here?
Well, that's an ancillary benefit to the project in that there's 40 full-time equivalent jobs.
Creating a housing base. Senior assistant housing base.
And I would reiterate, our experience has been, you know, we built a project in St. Michael, and people flooded back out of Rogers, and they came back down from Monticello because they wanted to be in their hometown. So technically, they were residents of those two cities, but they did come back to St. Michael.
Any other questions? Mr. Leake.
Just a couple of questions. First of all, remember this is a TIF district, which means that the funds don't come only from Shakopee taxes, but also Scott County and the school district.
Yep.
And while that doesn't answer the question about Shakopee residents or even Scott County residents, I think, as I think Mr. Denaway indicated in his review of what you have to determine in TIF, is that essentially what you're getting is the opportunity for the sorts of folks that Mr. O'Brien has talked about who have been residents or are residents or are mothers and fathers or aunts and uncles of people who are residents, the opportunity for that kind of housing in Shakopee, which is extremely limited. Now, we have one relatively small memory care facility, and so if you're looking, you're looking in Bell Plain or Jordan or Prior Lake for those kinds of facilities currently.
Perfect. Mr. O'Brien, you have anything else?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Let's close. Anyone else in the public like to speak? One last call? All right. Let's close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
For which body?
For the EDA.
For the EDA. Okay. Seconded by Pamela Punt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Public hearing for the EDA is closed.
I will entertain a motion for closing the City Council public hearing. Councilor Whiting.
Move to close the City Council's public hearing.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Clay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Councilor Whiting.
Are you ready for a motion?
For EDA.
For EDA?
It's up to President Clay.
Do the EDA first?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 12-4 approving the TIF plan, and also Resolution Number 12-5 approving the CPD and the issuance of the TIF note.
We have a motion to approve two resolutions, 12-4 and 12-5. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Pamela Punt. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Aye.
Let the record show that it passes with Mr. Lehman in dissent.
All right. Moving on to City Council. Any discussion this way? All right. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7194. This action, the City Council would approve the TIF plan for TIF District Number 15 within River Valley Housing Redevelopment District Number 1, the Trident Project, as well as the contract for public development.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Clay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one with Councilor Lehman in dissent. Councilor Lehman, why are you in dissent?
Well, to me, reasons that are already expressed, but they're also limiting their free capital opportunity to rent all of them at market rate, and if there's, I've already been showing that there's a market for that, and they could actually do that, and I don't think it's in their best interest actually to limit themselves. I also see it as somewhat of a spread of the wealth when you're taking money out of the existing households in Shakopee that are struggling to make ends meet and giving it to somebody else that maybe didn't manage their money over their 70 years of life as well as they should have. You know, it raises a equity issue that I guess rubs me the wrong way. And third, there's no guarantee that there's any benefit to Scott County elderly folks or Shakopee elderly folks. So there's multiple reasons.
Thank you. Moving on to you.
Mr. Ben, the EDA should adjourn now. Michael, is there going to be a meeting on the 19th?
That would be their regular meeting, yes.
So, oh.
Adjourn to the 19th?
Adjourn to the 19th.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn to the 19th.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Ms. Punt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. We adjourn to the 19th.
Thank you much, sir. Item number eight, business remove consent agenda. We are going to hold off on this until the end of the meeting. Item number nine, B1, rejection of bids for Riverside Fields Parks, product number PR 2012-1. Ms. Polly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Bringing you forward this action item tonight after receiving our bid opening for the Riverside Fields Park that we had on our CIP to complete the second phase of it in 2012. This park was to be built in phases. The first phase was to install the playground, which was done in 2011 down here in this area. The second phase was to complete the parcel that the city currently owns, and then a third future phase, if we move forward with that, would be when a development to the west happens. The City Council approved the plans and specifications and authorized to bid this project on April 3 of this year. Our project CIP allocation was $640,000. As I mentioned in your memo, our engineer's estimate already was currently over the budget that we had for the project. After you take out the design and construction costs and contingency, we had a construction budget of 550,400. We had a construction budget of five hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. So we were hoping that our bids were gonna come in favorable, closer to what our construction budget was. We did have one bid alternative where we could have taken out the paving of the hockey rink to get down to an estimate that would be five thousand under budget, so about a five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar project. But as you can see, we opened bids on May twenty-second. At one PM, we received two bids. Both of them were, one was six hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars, the other one was six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars. As you can see, they were both significantly over budget, close to a hundred thousand plus. That's even before we take out the blacktopping of the hockey rink. Being that we are so much over budget, staff is asking council to currently reject both of these bids and authorize staff to go back and bid these projects. In January or February of two thousand and thirteen, we feel, after talking with the different bidders that had plans, that were holding plans, that we were late this year in bidding this project. The county and the state had led a lot of projects early in March where a lot of crews were busy. Many, many companies are working right now on a skeleton crews where they didn't have project foremans to do smaller projects such as this. And being that we have two bids, did come in so far over budget, we would like to rebid the project. We will make a few changes to our quantities and the way we have described a few things after what we've learned. One thing that we do ask, though, is, one of the major questions with the two bids was the grading. Both of the companies that did bid had put a large amount, much different than what our engineer's estimates were for the amount of earth that needed to be moved, and that's because they weren't really comfortable with what was out there. So I put in here that I would also ask that council allow me to allocate six thousand dollars out of our current park fund reserve to complete some soil borings for this so we can get a better grasp on the soil types that are out there, as well as extend, for three thousand dollars, extend the agreement we have with StanTech for them to continue to do the bidding for this park. They would make the minor changes that we would make to the plans and specifications and manage the bidding process that we do early next year. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Lehman.
Was there any discrepancies on the bidding process on, what do you call, like, the height of, slope of the ground from what's out there compared to what the plans were?
The type of soil underneath those areas, and because of that slope, that is what the contractors that did bid the project felt they weren't, they didn't know how much earth they were gonna have to move, because our engineer that we have working for the city does know what soils underneath there, but we don't have any soil borings to actually prove at this time to these companies that, yes, there's good dirt here. So because of the topography of that park, yes, that's where the big question came.
This has got that drainage, what do you call it?
Pirelli, drainage.
Hey, what is it? It's the...
The Pirelli Gulli Channel.
Going through this park?
Yep, it does go around it, yes.
Okay.
Right here on the...
All right.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Lehman.
Mayor, I'll offer Motion Seventy-two oh four, Resolution Rejecting the Bids for Construction of the Riverside Fields Park, project number PR Two Thousand and Twelve dash one. And I'll include in my motion that the directing staff rebid the project in early two thousand and thirteen, allocating six thousand dollars for boring samples and administrative of the bidding process.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Clay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And Jamie, we're gonna mess around with the agenda a little bit and go on to Five F Ten right now, which was removed from consent agenda.
This is a request to have a joint meeting between the City Council and the Park and Rec Advisory Board. The recommendation was for July tenth. Jamie has contacted her board, and five or six of the seven could make it that evening to discuss status reports on various projects and financing. There's also a suggestion that it might be one of the additional items to discuss the June nineteenth meeting in two weeks. Unfortunately, it looks like at least of the five we've been able to contact today, three of those would not be able to make it. So is there a desire first to have the joint meeting, and if so, when?
I asked for this review from consent agenda because I would rather put it on the second meeting of June, so we didn't have to have an extra meeting, because I'm not a fan of extra meetings. But that doesn't work for everyone, so we, I think, July tenth, if it works with folks' schedule, will work. Councilman Lehman.
Mayor, can the park director give us an idea of how involved this discussion is gonna be in her perspective from the park board's point of view on the items that they wanna bring forward?
Yeah, this, it's, I don't see it as being a very, very involved workshop. It's more of an informational workshop. We have had a lot of discussions with the park board over the last couple of months about vacant land that the city currently owns, and how do we move forward in developing that? We've had a lot of presentations from our different associations. A couple of unique ideas are possibly coming forward in front of you within the next few months. It's really a workshop to bring you up to speed on what the discussions have been, and so that you're not caught off guard in a couple of months when I do bring a proposal from you from the Tennis Association, for instance, or that. And also, to clarify, we, back last year, we approved a park planning process with the park board, and then early this year, the City Council approved that, and I just wanna have a very brief discussion with both bodies sitting at the same table to say, yes, this is what we believe in, because with the development of some of these vacant parcels, we will be going back through that park planning process, and I wanna make sure as staff that I'm on the right path to doing things the way that we have designed through that process, so.
Two or three hours?
Two, maybe. I would see two.
That means three, so.
Oh, I don't know. It depends, I guess it depends how much we talk, but I see more informational.
Well, it usually goes longer because you've got two sides that are gonna be asking questions and discussing things, so I think, just to be safe, we're probably looking at two and a half, three.
Okay.
So if that's the case, are we gonna have time during a regular meeting to do this? I suspect we probably won't.
At this point, Mr. Mayor, Councilor, we don't know what will be on the July, or the June nineteenth meeting.
Right.
We'll get to that. That's another item for later. So do we want to go with the tenth, correct?
If someone wants to make a motion?
It'd be difficult for me, teaching a community ed park and rec class that day, but.
Ah.
I can maybe hear in a field trip.
Right.
I could probably get out of it.
What's class?
It's making soapbox derbies for Derby Day, soapbox.
What time is that, Jay?
I think it's around six or seven, but I can see if someone else can take that for me.
All right. All right, so I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Lehman.
I've got a motion to set the joint meeting with the Park and Rec Advisory Board for July tenth, two thousand and twelve.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Punt. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now getting back onto schedule here, nine D1, locally designated historic properties.
Mayor, Councilman Mark Noble from our planning staff will be presenting this item.
Mr. Noble.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. My name's Mark Noble. I'm Planner Two with the City of Shakopee, and I'm staff support to the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission, of which two of the commissioners are here with us tonight. Pat Pluman and Sarah Wyer are here, so. On their behalf, I'd like to present a proposal that they're moving forward with. In several years, we have been doing extensive research, block by block, house by house, of determining whether properties in Shakopee are locally designated historic properties. Back when the commission was established, they set some standards, including some criteria on the basis of determining whether a house would be considered a historic structure. And presently, we're in a third phase of the research. In March of two thousand and eight, we had provided, prepared, and was approved to list fifty-three structures or sites in the city, and the result of that was a booklet that many of you may recall seeing as a walking tour of Shakopee booklet that lists those fifty-three properties. That was in two thousand and eight, March. In June and August two thousand and ten, the commission completed their second phase of the research and listed twelve additional properties for locally designated historic structures. And now, here we're in June two thousand and twelve, and we've completed our third phase, and we believe it's the final phase of our field research in the city, and have compiled twenty additional properties that we're asking the council to support the commission moving forward with a meeting with the property owners of those properties to make them aware of this potential designation. The plan for the commission is to meet with those individuals on June eighteenth at the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission meeting. After that meeting, we would forward a summary statement and list revaluation of comments, conditions, questions that were raised at that June eighteenth meeting, and ask for the council to approve additional listing of properties. As it has been in the past, this is, I guess you could say, somewhat voluntary. At this point, we haven't had anybody of those sixty-five, and excuse the mistake in the memo, I think I had sixty-six on the memo, but there's actually sixty-five at this point. None of those properties, the property owners have raised any objections at this point about being listed as locally designated historic properties. One other aspect that ties into this, or could potentially tie into this, is preparation or crafting of a historic preservation ordinance, and that's something we've had, prepared a draft, we've had some meetings several years ago with the council, just to kind of start the process for evaluating the ordinance, but nothing yet has been prepared, finalized. If at the point we get to that where there's an ordinance, we would invite all the property owners of those properties listed as locally designated to meetings and be involved in evaluation of that ordinance so that we can get something crafted that general consensus is that people would support. Again, at this point, it's been voluntary, and in fact, one of the houses that were originally listed, that was demolished. We've had some discussions with people about what they can and can't do with their properties when they're listed. As of now, there's no ordinance that's set in place that would dictate anything, whether they wanna do additions, or re-side, or re-roof the structures. The purpose of this was just to celebrate some of the history of Shakopee and recognize those structures that the commission and the community felt were historic in nature and worth celebrating, and in this sense, putting together a document so that visitors to this community or residents of this community can go out and view these structures. Commissioner Pluman leads, there's, every two years, there's a, Historical Society does a Shakopee site tour that has been quite successful, where people, property owners, open up their homes to the community, historic structures, and they've been quite well attended. So there is interest in people in observing or participating in historic properties, and that's the initial goal of this commission. And again, we have completed the third phase, there's twenty properties listed. We'd like to, with the council's support, have the public meeting on June eighteenth, again, after which then we'd bring it back to council, and those people would be able to attend and speak for or against inclusion. So I think I've spoken quite a bit. I'll stop now and entertain any questions.
Councilman Lehman.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, the properties that are before us, when you approach them to see if they're interested in being involved in this, how can they make a decision without any information? I mean, we don't have an ordinance, so there's nothing that we can hand them to show them what they're getting into. And the second part of that question is, okay, if they sign up to be a part of this, and then we craft an ordinance that places restrictions on their property, they didn't know that when they signed up. So then what do we do?
Mr. Leake.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. To answer that directly, I think the answer to the first question is, they actually will know what they're getting into, and that is that this is a city that does not have an adopted policy by way of an ordinance that relates to those properties. So as a practical matter, it has very little impact on their properties at this point. As Mark indicated, if the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee and the City Council confer and move forward with an ordinance, then what is incumbent upon us is that all of those designated properties and those owners be part of the process of crafting that ordinance so that when it gets to the point of the City Council actually considering adoption, we don't have property owners who are not willing to take on whatever responsibilities or obligations may come from that ordinance with respect to their properties. So I think there's plenty of opportunity for them at that point to say yes or no to continuing with that designation, depending on what would be proposed.
Did I answer your question?
Almost. Let's try it one more time. So after these twenty, if they all participate, we'll have a total of seventy-five?
Be eighty-five, yes.
And hypothetical, if the city and the Historic Preservation Group passes a policy, putting restrictions on these properties, and these folks opt out, they will have that opportunity to opt out.
That is correct.
That's correct, yes. And just a minor clarification, it is not the HPAC that would adopt those regulations. It would be the City Council. You would have the final say.
Do members have anything you'd like to add at all?
No, I didn't understand what you were saying.
Perfect. Mr. Noble?
I failed to note, you know, we have the twenty, and you have the memo, you can kind of read up on those, but I also do have pictures. If you wanna see them, certainly they're available here for you to look at.
I think we're okay for now, thanks.
Okay, just mention it.
I appreciate that, though. Mr. Clay.
Just a comment that I'm feeling a bit slighted. The Pearson House abuts my property to the west, the Halverson House abuts my property to the east. It was built nineteen forty between the two, and but...
I think those two houses, outhouses were on your property.
Oh, that could be.
You're older than the house.
Yes.
You should be on the range.
No, the house is older than I am.
Oh. You've already got a street named after you. I think that...
Okay, yeah, you're right, all right.
Councilwoman Whiting.
And members of the council, I'm sure the HPAC at that June eighteenth meeting will discuss the input that they've received about that property.
Councilwoman Whiting.
Having been through a couple of these, or at least one of these meetings with the homeowners, it's been handled really well, and they've been presented with a certificate, and it's celebrated the fact, the fact of whether or not these homeowners want to live in a historic house is beside the point. They do live in a historic house, you know, if and when designated. I did get a chance to walk the streets and check out these houses. I only missed one out on Eagle Creek, and I'll probably catch it here, but some great examples, some ones we've been talking about for years, the whole Pill Hill area of...
That's me.
Your Pill Hill, yeah. Pill Hill is where many doctors, veterinarians, pharmacists built their houses in. Pill Hill is where many doctors, veterinarians, pharmacists built their houses and some really high-quality houses and some very interesting architecture. There's one in here, known a lot of people, you either really like it or you really hate it, but I won't point it out, but it's just one of those architectural things that are unique to Shakopee. These are very unique structures, a lot of trends, some different arrows of points of architecture, and I think it's nice that we've got this. Is there going to be a phase four or is phase three pretty much wrap it up?
I believe at this point, phase three pretty much takes care of the structures that met the criteria, one of them being aged fifty years or older. Certainly as time progresses, we have a secondary list that additional research was needed or age wasn't quite there, that in a few years maybe they would qualify and that we'd go back and revisit some of those properties. But I believe we've covered the city at this point.
Any additional questions? All right. We need a motion for this, I assume, correct? I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the requested list of houses of the HPAC to proceed with the meeting with the property owners of the structures that are indicated, candidates for listing locally designated historic properties and to move forward on a final determination to the council for formal approval at a future date.
Thanks, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Lehman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your work on the historical preservation. Item ninety-two, consider approval of resolutions for the construction and operation of the Marshall Road Transit Station. Mr. Leake?
Bring up my presentation. I've provided you with a lot of paper this evening, so I've tried to summarize it in the presentations in a way that's a little more intelligible. What I'm here before you tonight asking is that the council consider adopting three documents. I've prepared three resolutions by which you could do that. The first document is a construction cooperative agreement for the design and construction, primarily the construction activities for the Marshall Road Transit Station, which is located near Marshall Road at one sixty-nine. The second is a memorandum of understanding between the city of Prior Lake and the city of Shakopee regarding the design and construction services portion that each city would pay a portion of. And the third is a joint powers agreement for the operation and maintenance of the Marshall Road Transit Station. This first slide is simply an architect's concept of what that facility might look like and the structure to my right is a proposed addition to the structure, an outdoor waiting area, if you will. One of the key features of this project is that it would be the first one that we would have in terms of park and ride facilities in the city of Shakopee that would have interior waiting space, and we'll get to that in a moment. Regarding the construction cooperative agreement, there would be three parties, Scott County, the city of Shakopee, and the city of Prior Lake. The estimated cost of construction at this point is about two-point-one-four million dollars. The county had secured Chapter one fifty-two bond funds for the project totaling about one-point-one-seven million dollars. The potential cost for construction to the city of Shakopee is about one-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars and for Prior Lake about one-hundred-and-fourteen or one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. The balance would be the county of Scott's cost for construction. The second is the memorandum of understanding for design and construction services. That would be between the city of Shakopee and city of Prior Lake and addresses a cost split between the two cities. As you can see, the estimated cost of those services is about four-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars. Shakopee's potential cost is right around one-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars and under the split, Prior Lake's would be eighty-six thousand dollars. The third agreement is one that we already have in place, both for Southbridge Crossings Transit Station and Eagle Creek Transit Station, so it would be a similar agreement for ongoing maintenance and operation. The estimated costs that you see on this slide are based on our experience primarily with Southbridge. Eagle Creek, of course, is coming online in July and we've budgeted a similar amount. On an annual basis, there's a three-way split because of certain restrictions they have in statute. The county cannot contribute cash, so they provide in-kind services and Shakopee's and Prior Lake's cost annually would be between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars. Couple of other additional graphics, a little bit hard to read at this scale, but Lisa Fries, who's in the audience with us, if you have questions for the county, provided this. This is the preliminary site concept plan. This is, of course, the former Shakopee Dodge and Denny Hecker Site. So to the upper part of the slide is the exit ramp for one sixty-nine and one sixty-nine. You can see the proposed bus ramp, bus-only access to that ramp, and the buses would then continue onto the entrance ramp on the east side of Marshall Road. Most of the parking on this site would be for park and ride purposes. At least four hundred spaces under the grant of Chapter one fifty-two funds have to be park and ride related. There are, if I recall correctly, about forty-six or so spaces that the county contemplates needing for its staffing and other functions. And I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but this facility already is used in part for storage by the county, in part for storage of some of their transit vehicles. A portion of the site would house the transit staff for the county, which is currently in the courthouse, having had to leave their previous facility, and then the library staff as well. Even more difficult to see, but you can see the larger area to the left, which was the service area for the auto dealerships, provide storage for up to, I think, about half of the fleet of buses, small buses that the county has. And the second floor, I believe, is the, the second floor and a portion of the first floor are the primary office areas. There is, to the north of the bus storage area, areas that are currently being used by the county for storage. And if you have questions about those two slides, Lisa probably has better information than I. But with that, if, one additional item, I did learn that the Prior Lake City Council last evening did discuss these agreements. They had them on a previous agenda, continued the discussion to last night, and they did authorize executing the agreements as you see them in front of you. What I've prepared for you, if you choose to enter into those agreements, is Resolution seventy-two oh six, or, excuse me, seventy-two oh five, related to the construction cooperative agreement, seventy-two oh six relating to the memorandum of understanding for the design and construction services, and then Resolution seven-two oh seven related to the operation and maintenance joint powers agreement. So with that, I'll take your questions.
Councilman Lehman?
The ramp onto, the exit ramp onto the one sixty-nine, is that, who's funding that?
That's funded by the Chapter one fifty-two bond funds awarded by the state.
Okay. I have another question.
And I should note, just for safety reasons, because someone who's watching may have been wondering, it's not a free access, there would be controlled access for the buses, so we wouldn't have conflicts between other vehicles and the buses as they enter that ramp. That ramp, of course, would be used only for the morning runs, they would return by an alternate route in the evening.
Councilman Clay?
The one-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand are the two one-time costs, I believe.
Yep.
And there's money available on a transit fund for that?
The transit fund balance right now is at approximately one-point-three million dollars, so yes, there are funds available in the transit fund balance for those costs. I should note also that in the Eagle Creek Transit Station case, we had contemplated between the city of Prior Lake and Shakopee, funding about three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. We didn't have to do that because we had secured regional transit capital bond funds for that three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. So essentially, we left program funds unspent for that purpose and they're available in that fund balance of one-point-three million.
Councilman Lehman?
Mr. Leake, I'm going to ask the same question that I ask every time we talk about transit. So you already know what the question is, what's the answer?
All right, moving on.
Is that the...
No, no.
There's no way to make sure that only Shakopee people use the transit?
Seriously, we talk about the state and what they do with our transit fund dollars.
Correct. Yep. I knew that was the question and the answer is in part that...
Could we, could we talk about the question first? What is the question exactly?
The question is, if I can paraphrase and please set me straight if I'm wrong. The question is, lovely that we're providing additional transit services, the state legislature has not been terribly helpful, nor has the Metropolitan Council in terms of providing operating funds for providers like our city and the others who are called opt-out transit providers. And those of you who were on the council, remember we did a transit operations plan in two thousand ten that demonstrated we should be able to operate the additional services at least through two thousand eighteen. We've been working with Carol Becker, who you may recall from that presentation, Councilor Lehman, to revise that. And we know that under the current scenario, we do have a funding issue potentially in two thousand fifteen or two thousand sixteen, and that issue related in large part to what the legislature did in two thousand eleven, which is that they froze our Mvest funding for operations at the two thousand eleven rate and then got the legislature to implement an additional cut beyond that. So we were actually receiving throughout this year less operational funds. And the theory on the part of the Met Council, which sold this to the legislature, was, well, darn it, those folks shouldn't have fund reserves for transit purposes. And of course, we all had been marshaling those resources to make sure we could operate what we were putting in place. We tried this past legislative session to undo those cuts and that freezing, that was not successful. The Met Council came up with a proposal to add, I believe it was about four-point-two million dollars into the regional transit capital bonding that would be available to the cities that experienced cuts, that would be us in Shakopee, Prior Lake, Maple Grove, which saw a four-million-dollar cut, or all of their Mvest for two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, and the city of Plymouth. And those capital funds, while they don't address operations, are supposed to be available for delayed projects. And in our case, the theory is that this Marshall Road Transit Station is a delayed project for which those funds can be used. We'll have to make that request. So that means, I think essentially, we would upfront the costs that I've outlined for you tonight and be able to reimburse what we've spent from the portion, or at least partially, it's not entirely, from that. We still have the Mvest funding issue and we will have to continue working on that at the legislature.
Does that answer your non-question?
Yes, Mayor, past councils have looked at this issue and took a position and asked staff to write into our agreements the ability for the city with a notice to be able to scale back services if need be. If...
And we do have that, we have a thirty-day notice provision in our contracts with Scott County and Schmitty's. We may be in the position of having to rebid the express service contract because of what the Met Council thinks needs to be done. That's a subject of the conversations that were started, I guess, between the staffs at Prior Lake and Met Council and the city of Shakopee. But we do have thirty-day notice provisions regarding our service.
And tonight's proposal?
Pardon?
Tonight's proposal?
Well, if, couple of different things. First of all, the Southbridge Station is in fact owned by the county, and if I recall back that far, the agreement provides that if, let's say we were to determine we don't have operating funds and we're going to cut the entire express service, maybe operate the circulator service. And Prior Lake made the same decision. That means it's not being operated for transit purposes, and I believe the agreement on that says that it then becomes available to the region, to the Met Council to operate for transit purposes. I'm not sure what the, the Eagle Creek Transit Station is on Shakopee Meadowonkington-owned land. There is, I believe, a twenty-five-year lease with a twenty-five-year renewal on that lease between the county and the Meadowonkington. I'm not sure what the notice provisions are in that lease agreement. And for Marshall Road Transit Station, the ownership is partially in Mindott and partially in the county, so...
But we could opt out of our, our service portion if we didn't have the operational ability?
Yeah, the worst-case scenario, I think, would be that Prior Lake and Shakopee both said, look, we don't have operational funds for Blue Express, we're not going to offer Blue Express, so we wouldn't be using the park and rides for those purposes. The options would be for, at least in the case of Southbridge, to go back to the Met Council, for them to look at providing the service or for the city to look at a potential arrangement with MBTA or Southwest Transit to provide the service. In fact, we're starting those discussions about whether or not we should be doing some joint services anyway with those entities. But that would be the worst-case option, as I see it.
And them connections make everybody more viable?
Yeah, presumably they do.
Yep.
Especially with the Southwest Light Rail Transit Line.
Sorry, Mayor, gives you a big picture, though.
Any other questions? All right, I have one, what, having not gone through this process of purchasing the building and everything, what happens at the intersection out on Seventeenth to control traffic out there with...
The analysis indicated that at some point that will need to be signalized, but that's not triggered by the traffic that would be generated by this park and ride. As I recall the analysis that was done on the county's dime, it said that the background development growth will ultimately result in the need for signalization at seventeen. So, do you have any, whoops. Go over there. Do you have anything you want to add in response to that question?
There's a stoplight there, isn't there?
Should wear my new...
My holiday? Mayor, members of the council, Lisa Fries with Scott County, I believe you're talking about Seventeenth Avenue and Weston Court, that intersection. We did do a traffic analysis and I think Michael summarized it pretty well. We will need to monitor that intersection as we start the park and ride facility and at some point it will meet warrants and be justified for a signal and then it will need to be installed. There are some other developments that are pending in that area and all of those things have an impact on the timing of when that will be necessary.
Okay, because I banked it, and I banked there and came out pretty much every day and that intersection is tough. And during the campaign, I had a lot of people talking to me about that intersection as being very difficult, so if we can watch that extremely closely as we move forward.
Daycare there, too, is there?
Mm-hmm. Kinder care is there and the gas station, and that was while the Dodge was closed. And so if we're adding however many hundreds of cars into there, it's going to make it necessary as we move forward. That's all. Thank you.
We'll make sure it is monitored. And just for your information, the one thing that may be helpful in terms of understanding is that we will move forward with the final design this year. We anticipate that we'll start construction on the remodeling of the building in the late summer and the site itself, the improvements, the bus ramp, probably won't be complete until midsummer. midsummer of next year. And then our obligation, under the funding agreement we have with the state with the Chapter 152 money, is that at some point within the next year, we place into service some form of express bus service out of that park-and-ride location. So it could be as late as sometime 2014 before we actually put the park-and-ride in full motion, and we'll work collaboratively with the cities to figure out when's the right time to start service.
Wonderful. Just a quick question.
Any projections on ridership or usage? Is that just too hard to grasp at this point?
We know that the capacity of the park-and-ride will have 400, approximately 400 stalls, and it usually takes about five to six years for a park-and-ride with adequate bus service out of it to ramp up and to get to close to full utilization. So, once we have adequate bus service, a number of buses to, to support 400 parking spaces, we probably will see it reach capacity in about five years.
Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, the, Lisa, you said that the, your agreement with the state requires the express service to start out of that location? That, that agreement doesn't require Shakopee to be the provider of that express service, does it?
It requires that, the county is not the express bus provider, the Blue Express right now is. And so it would be the consortium of Shakopee and Prior Lake working together to figure out when to provide service out of that site.
Well, what if Shakopee wasn't able to operate that service financially?
Well, then we would have to work to see if there's some other mechanism. Perhaps the Met Council would provide service, and we'll have to work that out when that happens. But right now, we have our operations plan in place. We're working on revising it, and it appears that it would be possible to provide service, and we'll cross that bridge if, if that decision is made by the, the city of Shakopee or Prior Lake when that happens.
And just to add to that, Councilor Lehman, members of the council, I think the succinct answer is that service would have to be provided from that site if the city of Shakopee were up to, to opt not to do Blue Express, which probably would make it fairly untenable for Prior Lake as well. I would hope and think that the city would work with either the Met Council or with one of the other providers who has an interest in this corridor as their future growth to provide for that service in the timeframe that's required.
All right. Any other questions?
Can, here.
Councilman Lehman?
I'm kinda concerned about this, but, you know, maybe I should ask for, for a legal opinion, because if they, it seems like in theory, the Met Council could cut our funding and make it impossible for us to operate this, and then turn around and say, you're required to operate this even though we cut your funding. Is that a true statement?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't think the Met Council could require you to operate a bus service if you chose not to.
We're talking about two different things, I think. You've got the Met Council basically, as a player at the legislature, addressing the funding issue from their perspective as a regional transit provider. And then you've got a grant agreement of 152 funds that requires the agency that was awarded those funds to make sure there is express transit service provided in that timeframe. It doesn't, it doesn't say who has to provide it. As Lisa indicated, we think it will be the consortium that we've put together and operated under since 2007. But if it's not, then we'll look at the other options for providing that service consistent with the requirement that Mindot places on the use of those funds. They are not one and the same thing. And we'll talk outside this room about my own thoughts about Met Council's strategy on funding, but they are two separate things. And we do have, I should say, we do have some friends at the legislature, even though it hasn't been a happy time for us. Obviously, Representative Beard has been important in discussions, and if he's re-elected, I assume will play the same kind of role as Chair of the Transportation Committee in the next session.
All right. I think that we've had enough discussion. We'll move forward with motions, and we can have discussion with those motions.
You want them one at a time or in bulk?
Uh, what's the best way?
One at a time.
One at a time, please. Councilman Clay?
Offer Resolution Number 7205, a resolution approving the, a construction, a cooperative agreement with Scott County for design and construction of the Marshall Road Transit Station.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Standing by, Councilman Punt. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Next one? Councilman Whitey?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7206, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the city of Prior Lake for design and construction services for the Marshall Road Transit Station.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Councilman Lehman?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Last one. Councilman Punt. Welcome to the parade.
I will offer Resolution Number 7207, a resolution approving a joint powers agreement for the operation and maintenance of the Marshall Road Transit Station.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Standing by, Councilman Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you all. All right, item number 9E1, Presentation of Preliminary Concept Plans and Information for the County Road 17, Veerling Drive and US 169 Ramp Intersections, D and E. Sorry, didn't need to add the D and E, it just kinda was on a roll.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll do a brief introduction of this item, and Chris Cromie, who's putting his presentation in the computer, will do most of the presentation as he's the main project manager we hired to assist us in this project. If you recall, in February, we entered into an agreement with Scott County to do a cooperative agreement for this project. We did obtain some federal funds, 1.1 million of Highway Improvement Safety Funds, that we can use on this intersection and, when we're talking about the intersection, we're talking Veerling Drive and County State Highway 17, and also the North Trunk Highway 169 Ramp and Marshall Road, County Road 17. Reason we're here before you tonight, we've had three project management meetings as a team, and we have, Bolton and Mink has put together some very good information, some findings with traffic studies, and coordination meetings with Mindot. And we want to present you the information that we have found and present that in our concept drawings prior to the open house, which is scheduled for June 14th, with mainly the business community in that area. It'll be at the Country Inn and Suites in that area. So with that, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Chris to make a presentation, and you can ask questions and provide some feedback, but we want you to have the information before we go to the open house.
Bruce, how do I get to the...
Yep, hit that. Hit it harder. Get your full screen.
It's me. That's all I need.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you, Bruce. As Bruce mentioned, I just wanna provide you an update and present some of the information, some of our findings to date, and some of the potential solutions we're evaluating for the, primarily the two intersections of County Road 17 and the north ramp at US 169, and then County Road 17 and Veerling. But you'll see, much of the information goes beyond of that, those intersections, because they're, the problem is all interrelated with spacing intersections. Some of you may remember, and I'll pull, I'll pull up some slides here as I, as I go, but... I wanna open that. This corridor was studied a number of years ago as a, as a future principal arterial from US 169 down to Highway 19, all the way through Scott County. And their, their study, the northern limits were the, the 101 River Bridge. And... I apologize, I'm trying to open this here. So you can see the, the board itself. Okay. Are you able to see what I'm, what I'm, what I have here?
We get an idea of it.
More or less, yeah. That's, I don't wanna do that. Okay. Well, I'll, I apologize, I was hoping to zoom in and show you some additional information. But, but the corridor study in 2009, that extended from Highway 19, okay, now I'm there.
Well done in the back room.
Back in 2009, it extended from Highway 19 all the way up to the Highway 101 River Bridge. And there were various segments and levels of, of analysis that were done. And the segment, okay, I'm not gonna be able to zoom here. The segment, the corridor that we're talking about tonight is Segment D, and that's basically from 17th Avenue intersection up through the Veerling Drive. And it identified the issue with the closely spaced intersections and, and the crash history that's associated with the close proximity of the intersections themselves. So the, the city, along with Scott County, applied for federal money to address some of the safety concerns there, and were awarded one point, just under 1.1 million dollars in federal money to address, address some of the safety concerns at the intersection, at the two intersections. Just some general study background, there are roughly about 55,000 vehicles that pass through the Marshall Road interchange area between Veerling, Veerling Drive, the traffic actually on 17, and then 17th Avenue. There were over 100 recorded crashes in that same segment between 2008, 2009, and 2010. So the crash, the crash history here is, is fairly extensive. In particular, the intersection of 17 and Veerling Drive has a crash rate, has the highest crash rate in the city of Shakopee, which helped get the federal money that is available. No, I'm just, how do I go to the next? Okay. Remember flip charts? I'm gonna open the next file. Go, please. There you go. There you go. There we go. Stick right over here. So the, the purpose of the study that the city hired our firm to do and work with Mindot and Scott County, really to investigate the, the cause of the safety and congestion issues at these intersections, evaluate multiple improvement concepts, communicate the need for future long-term improvements, select a preferred alternative for intersection improvements that at least address the existing problems, and complete the design work for construction in 2014. At the, the root of the issues in this location is really the close proximity of the intersections to one another, and the amount of traffic that's trying to move through the area. And our traffic analysis shows that from a delay standpoint, delays are, are pretty well in the acceptable range during peak hours. But what the issue is, is the queuing. There isn't enough room on 17 and on Veerling Drive, or on the ramps, to stack vehicles up at the intersection and cycle through the, the, the traffic signals. And two in particular issues that are, that are causing safety issues. One is the exit ramp. Let's see if I can zoom in here. One is at the exit ramp of 169 southbound. During the afternoon peak hour, it's common for that exit ramp to stack up enough vehicles where it starts extending down onto the highway, onto the 169. And that presents a significant safety issue for vehicles exiting, not having the deceleration available, room for deceleration available, and has led to some, some rear end, rear end crashes. The other issue from a queuing perspective, or a stacking perspective, is northbound County Road 17 to go westbound on Veerling Drive. It's a really long, single-left turn lane today, and it routinely fills that left turn lane and, and stacks traffic into through, through movements. And the crash history that we've investigated supports the theory that, you know, because of the queuing, there, there are unexpected conflicts in the traffic flow, and crashes occur. So we, we're seeing crashes, like rear-end crashes on 17 due to those queuing, same-direction side swipe crashes, where vehicles just, moving vehicles aren't expecting to have those, those queues back to that point. So we're, we're looking at this as a, as a three-phased approach to making improvements. Some of them, some of the improvements are going to be implemented this summer. Some of, the long-term solution and improvements are yet to be determined. In the short term, Mindot, as a partner with the city here, has agreed to look at traffic signal coordination for the trafs, for traffic signals between 17th Avenue and Veerling. And really what that does is it synchronizes the operation of the traffic signals so that it operates as one system. And the real benefit to the, to the motorist, and on the heaviest movements, it will enable you, if you stop at a red light for one, you should be able to hit greens as you move through. Similarly, similarly, at ramp intersections like this, if you're in the exit ramp, Mindot's priority is to get you off. So they want to, the, the signal will be timed, so you make that left turn to go south on, on 169 and hit a green on that next signal and the following signal. So you, again, it's, if you hit one green, you should make it all the way through. And that's what the, the coordination process will do. Mindot is in the process of implementing that, and will be doing that in the next couple of months. Usually when, usually when they do that, it doesn't go without notice. Motorists notice the change. Sometimes they perceive it as to be a, a bad change. Sometimes it's just a different change, and they notice it. And so you may, you may get calls, city may get calls, Mindot may get calls. There's also a tweaking, you know, they'll program this back in the office, implement it in the controller, and then they'll do some tweaking based on field observations over the course of a couple of days, up to a couple of weeks as well. So trying, trying to get it to, to, to better match the, the actual conditions. So that's a short, the short-term improvement. The midterm improvement is, is the one that we are looking at for the federal money, the federal safety money, that the, the city was successful in... federal safety money that the city was successful in securing. And what that includes is adding a lane to the exit ramp. See if I can zoom in here so we can see it a bit better. So southbound exit ramp, southbound 169, exit to Marshall Road, we're going to add a lane or widen it to the north so that there would be three lanes of approach coming up to that traffic signal. What this will enable us to do is to stripe two of the lanes for left turns, which is the heavier of the two movements and which is most restricted by the traffic signal, and then an exclusive right turn lane. Today, there's only two lanes, one left turn and one right turn. So that would be part of the project. The second aspect of the project will be to add a northbound, a second northbound left turn lane on 17 to go west on Veerling Drive. That again is one of the areas where we have the queuing problem that extends beyond the capacity of the turn lane today. The double left turn lane will enable us to move more vehicles through on the same cycle of the traffic signal. And being that there are two lanes receiving on Veerling, we can run two through there. We're looking at a couple of different options from a cost, from a property impact standpoint, relative to whether or not we widen to the east or widen to the west. Through a reduction in lane width from 12-foot lanes down to 11-foot lanes, reducing the median from six feet to four feet, we're hoping to accomplish this lane addition with only three feet of widening of the roadway itself. And again, that's to try to fit the best we can within the existing, within the existing So both interim options, I mentioned that reduces the lane width. They also include upgrades to the sidewalk and trail system and traffic signal equipment. All the sidewalks and trails and traffic signals will be ADA compliant when the project is done. Traffic signal equipment will have new technology like pedestrian countdown timers, more advanced push buttons, potential for the flashing yellow arrow during off-peak periods for left turns. So you'll notice some changes there. Both of our options are considering improvements on Veerling Drive as well. At a minimum, we'll be doing some pavement rehabilitation on Veerling. We're also looking at the access condition and turn lane configuration at the Tasha Boulevard intersection, which is the first intersection west of Highway 17. One of the issues there is the right turn lane that goes to Walgreens but not to Tasha is kind of confusing, probably leads a lot of people into Walgreens that aren't intending to go there. We're looking at potentially extending that to Tasha and potentially then closing the driveway to Walgreens. The other, on the other side of the road, or in the middle of the road, today there are left turns permitted. One of the issues that we're seeing is the left turns, while it's not signalized, are still queuing up. There's a very large volume of traffic that makes that left turn immediately, disproportionately makes that left turn at Tasha to go to Super America and Cub Foods that actually progress on to the west. Because of that queuing effect, our concern is that queue's not going to clear out in order to bring that dual left from northbound 17 on Veerling Drive, and it's going to actually hinder the benefit of adding that additional lane on northbound 17. As we look to the future, the improvements that we're proposing, the additional turn lanes and the upgrades to the traffic signals, will get you some capacity benefit as well as safety benefit. As we start looking at the lifespan of that benefit, we have to consider how the traffic is going to grow in the area. And we looked at a number of both forecasts that were created in the past based on land use projections, locations of population growth, location of employment centers. But then also, we paid particularly close attention to what has occurred over the past five years from a traffic growth perspective. And then brought, kind of married the various sources of data together to develop a projection. And generally, what we're finding is traffic is still growing on Conner Road 17. We're not necessarily seeing that on all corridors. And has consistently been growing from the, in the 2007 to the 2012 timeframe, as well as the 2010 to the 2012. Traffic is also growing at a greater rate south of 169. You know, there was a discussion earlier about Conner Road 17 and 17th Avenue intersection. We see the traffic growing there faster than it is on north side at Veerling. We're also taking into consideration the old Kmart and Rainbow Foods building. That's 100,000 square foot retail space, and depending on what goes in there, could contribute anywhere from 3,000 to 9,000 new trips on the roadway system when that space With those growth rates, we anticipate these improvements will get you probably another 10 years before we're back at where we are today for congestion and potential safety that goes along with the congestion. I think all of the agencies recognize that a longer-term solution, a longer-term idea may be necessary. And there's been some discussion about what that could look like. I don't think that we're going to get there in the current project, in the current study. The potential long-term solutions, I think, are an order of magnitude or two larger. One concept that was discussed in the 2009 corridor study called for a six-lane section of 17th or Conner Road 17 through the interchange, through the, from 17th Avenue up through Veerling Drive, and access changes on Veerling Drive, similar to some of the things that we're considering. We've discussed the potential for a multi-lane roundabout at 17 and Veerling in order to minimize some of those left turn conflicts and get the moving around the roundabout in a more orderly fashion. And then some other interchange improvements that could occur, again, to remove some of the conflicting traffic that left turns present in the traffic stream. There are quite heavy left turns, both southbound to get onto 169, coming off of 169, go south, go north to go west on Veerling. And most of those are in conflict with one another, happening at the same time, and leading to the queuing issues that are happening and everybody agrees to. So as Bruce mentioned, we just started here the past couple of months. We feel like we got a pretty good handle on the traffic conditions and where we see things going. We think we have a pretty good handle on the improvement concepts. Now, which way we go relative to the widening is yet to be determined. Bruce mentioned we're having an open house, particularly for the business owners in the area, to get their input on how the improvements may positively or negatively affect them. And then we hope to be bringing recommendations back to council here this fall so that we can move into detailed design right-of-way acquisition in 2013, and then construction So again, long-term improvements are out there ways, but we think that this interim project and the use of the safety money to address the existing safety issue is a good direction to head. So with that, if you want to...
Chris, if you could talk a little bit more about Tasha Boulevard intersection?
Yep.
And the amount of left turns that we have in there, I think 450 left turns per hour in the peak area. That's quite a bit in a short distance. So we're going to, with the double left coming there, there's going to be potential weaving and conflicts, and we're going to have to look at that a little closer. I mean, what options to close that so there can't be left turns, they won't have to block the signal? If Chris could elaborate on that a little bit better. The other option, do some kind of intelligent traffic design where we have a signal there coordinated with the other signal? Can you explain how that works, Chris?
Right. Yeah, as Bruce explained, the issue, this being, you see my mouse on there or not? This being 17, the vertical is Veerling Drive. So the Tasha Boulevard, 430 cars in an hour making a left turn is an awful lot. At a signalized intersection, we'd be talking about double left turn lanes to accommodate that kind of a volume. And we're accommodating that here with an unsignalized left turn. Some of the things that we're seeing even today, because of the volume of traffic on eastbound Veerling, there aren't gaps available for left turners to come through. And so we're getting a queuing effect in that turn lane that comes back to the 17 intersection. When we put the dual left turn lanes and we have two streams of traffic going into Veerling, it's going to be important that we keep that clear. Otherwise, the backup's going to extend quickly back into the Veerling Drive or the Conner Road 17 corridor. So as Bruce mentioned, we talked about a number of options. The simplest option from a traffic standpoint is to close that median, force those left turns up to Heather Street, which is by the Taco Bell, Taco John's signal. And that intersection with minor modifications could accommodate those left turns. There would be quite a queue there, but we also have quite a long left turn lane. Another option that we've talked about and are considering further is to signalize a portion of the Tasha intersection that would stop the eastbound traffic to allow a phase of left turners through and clear through prior to dumping the left turns on northbound 17 to Veerling. It's again, I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, the primary cause of the issue out here is the close proximity of the intersections and the conflicts that they present relative to the amount of traffic that we're trying to move, that is trying to move through the area. So by coordinating the signals both on 17, this signal idea or partial signalization, that would be very much coordinated with the 17 and Veerling intersection as well.
Yeah, one more of the easy, we really have a street name, but it's a one into quick trip. That intersection, Chris, I think it operates pretty well today.
Right. It operates with relatively acceptable delays. I think there's a lot of pavement out there today, so it may feel kind of uncomfortable. But from a delay standpoint, we really don't see an issue from a crash standpoint. There isn't a crash history there. We do anticipate though, as the traffic grows, that intersection from a delay standpoint's going to become problematic, particularly in peak hours with the growth of traffic on Veerling Drive. It would probably be good to start considering other longer-term options for that intersection as well and access to those businesses.
I think it covered my points, so now it's your turn.
All right. Councilman Lehman.
Under either scenario, for Tasha, you'd still be able to make the right out?
Yeah, from like Super America, yeah. At a minimum, I think that we'd keep it as a right in, right out. So you'd be able to get back to it.
All right. And then on the southern portion of this area, the entrance and exit ramp on, off of 169 on the south side, being that we just talked about the bus ramp going to go in there?
Mm-hmm.
And the 400 cars that are going to park in that parking lot, can we take that into consideration into this design process?
That is included in forecasted volumes. We are talking about not so much on-the-ground changes to that signal, but we're talking about adding a left turn, flashing the yellow left turn arrow to help move traffic through. There may be some other modifications to the traffic signal just to get it to operate better.
And then if, Mayor, if Tasha was closed for no left in, would you still have a right in and out on the north side of Veerling and Tasha?
Yes.
Okay.
What kind of direction are you looking at for us, from us? Do you just want general ideas? Do you want us to get into specifics like that? What can best help you right now? Because I'm sure we're going to go through this process a few more times.
Our primary objective is we wanted to bring you up to speed prior to having the public meeting. But certainly any feedback that you have initially in realizing this is the first that you've seen it, any feedback would be appreciative.
Okay. Let's just go down the line real quick. Councilman Whiting?
Well, I, we've all, I think, sat in these backups. I think I've been even past that blue line a few times. But I know it's not going to be a good, it's not going to be an easy decision to close off Tasha, but I've, as not the greatest driver in the world, there's been a few close calls there, I think, and for myself. So we have to do something, I think. It's just getting farther backed up into the intersection. Other than that, I think it's a good plan, but I wish it could extend out a little farther than the 10 years, you know, so we get a little more bang for the buck, was my only thought.
Councilman Clay?
Couple things. A quick question first. With double left turn lanes from northbound Marshall Road to westbound Veerling, does that mean we're going to then restrict free right turns from, for the southbound Marshall Road to westbound Veerling?
You could still do a right turn on red, but you would restrict it, the right-of-way would be granted to the northbound left turns.
So I mean, can you put a red left turn signal?
You...
To tell people, don't even try because...
Well, you could sign it for no turns on red, but that may be effective during the peak hour. But there may be gaps in the other 20 hours a day that a right turn on red could be acceptable. But we can certainly take a look at how right turns on red and whether or not we could expect any of those. But, you know, on a red ball, a right turner does need to yield. We wouldn't be giving them a right-of-way.
The other thing that hasn't been talked about in this presentation, but we've talked about it a number of times, is trying to find a way to get a sidewalk in on Heather from Veerling up to Cub and those shopping areas. If we're going to have that many cars being moved, taking away the left-hand turn at Tasha and moving it down to Heather, without the extra traffic there, it really seems like we're going to, we should be looking for some way to engineer a sidewalk in there.
And that's something, if, you know, if business owners are engaged in our process, that that's something that we can look at with them. That is, both Tasha and Heather are private streets, they're not public streets, so those improvements would have to occur on private property.
Well, if they don't want to put in a sidewalk, then we just won't give them any entrances from Veerling. Maybe they'll change their mind.
Land lock them.
Yeah.
I think that's something we can bring up, or we'll maybe get some feedback at the open house. If the property owners that are in that area, we can ask, what's your interest level on a sidewalk, into the, a safe sidewalk for people? But again, that's, we'd have to work with private property owners. We can't, I don't think we can go in there and... We can't, I don't think we can go in there and, and put it in without their permission. Unless Jim Thompson says something different, so.
He's not chiming in, so.
That's the, that is the issue. If it's a public right of way, we certainly can go ahead and add it.
My turn?
I don't know yet. Mr. Clay, you done?
Yeah.
Councilman Lehman?
I know they're both capable, so I don't have a whole lot to add. I'll see what they come up with, and a lot of what you've come up with already is pretty decent. But if you have two lefts on northbound Marshall onto westbound Veerling, how do we prevent the farthest right-left that's trying to get into SA or Cub from not cutting off the farthest left-left?
Well, that is going to be a challenge, and that's something that we've been, that we've been studying because two-thirds of that left turn traffic wants to turn into the Cub Food, Super America area. Because many of those are destinations, you know, we think majority of the traffic is going to figure that out. We will, as in most of the time when there is a double left turn lane, we will have skip stripes through the intersection to keep people focused on the receiving lane. So if you're in the right-left lane, you got a left turn into the right lane.
What are skip stripes?
Just, we call them chicken scratches, chicken tracks through the intersection.
Oh, just the ones that tell you where you're going?
Just paint, paint on, through the intersection.
Anything else? Councilman Punt?
I think pursuing the closure of the Walgreens entrance and moving traffic to Tasha for that right turn, that's a great idea. So definitely get some feedback on that at the open house.
We'll get lots of feedback from Walgreens on it.
From Walgreens too, yes. Their prime corner location.
But it's right in or out, and it's not really that big of a deal.
Move to Heather.
It's just, yeah. No, the right, the right to Tasha only because they have a right, private right turn. Because that does cause confusion because people will correct themselves and swing out of that. And then I think moving the left turns to Heather is a great idea to pursue as well. So definitely on the right track. Thank you.
Very good. My questions are, do, do the traffic patterns dictate that we have to have two from northbound Marshall through the Veerling intersection? Do we have to have two lanes through there? Because whenever I'm sitting there, hardly anybody is actually going, continues on in other traffic patterns that dictate that we have to have that?
I would say yes. It's not all that, it's not all that apparent when you have the, that right lane drops immediately after the intersection. But what it does do is it reduces the amount of green time you need to provide for that northbound movement and then can reassign that green time in the, in the traffic scene to another critical movement.
Okay, guess is good enough. I'm good with that. And then second question is that we just need to get a second grocery store and then we reduce the amount of everybody going into the...
A different location.
Right, exactly. And then we solve, not solve, but we reduce, that extends our 10 years a little bit through there.
Come shop out east.
Yeah.
Come shop out east.
There you go. All right, any other questions? Does that give you enough from us? Do you have any other specific questions you'd like? I think this is great, and I hope that a lot of homeowners and businesses go to the open house on the, will you say when that is again?
Nope. That's, we just wanted to get you the information before we went to the open house. So if somebody asks you a question, you'll, you'll be up to speed.
Beautiful.
And you're welcome to the open house, too.
June, Thursday, June 14th, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Country Inn and Suites.
And the 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. timeframe was picked out, kind of, we're talking to, to the business community, that's the best time.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, can we take a five-minute stretch break?
Sure, yeah. 9:30.
I should adjourn for a five-minute break.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? All right, we are on a five-minute break.
All right, we are reconvened at nine forty-one. Moving on to item number nine F one. Sacrifice fund request for Dr. Daniel and Mary McGraw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This relates to a building which the McGraws are constructing at two fifteen South Lewis, just north of the library. They started footing and foundations constructions last fall. At the time he was advised, Dr. McGraw was advised that as is typical on January first, the cost of the sewer availability charge, the SAC credit, was going to go up. On January first, he purchased a SAC credit from Metropolitan Council, and I think the savings was about a hundred and thirty-five over the new two thousand twelve rate. Shortly after the first of the year, and unrelated to their activity, you acted upon a recommendation from the EDAC to look at using potentially SAC credits from the city's existing bank of SACs for economic development activity. The intent of that was to be for those sorts of projects which would generate either significant jobs or significant tax base, things such as that. McGraws saw that and have asked staff if they wouldn't follow under the same criteria in that they're doing economic development activities, it is new construction. We've looked at it, while we're happy to see the activity in the downtown area, we did not believe that this falls in the same classification as what had been anticipated with the SAC policy that you had created. They also noted on a related note that the council has authorized staff to negotiate with three property owners, that would be the recipients of new sewer at the intersection of First and Apgar Street, for SAC credits, which was intended to go to offset the cost of that development because they will have significant assessments as a result of the sewer extension. Again, we didn't see that that was applicable in this case, as Lewis Street already has sewer in it, and there were no assessments related to that. Based on that, our recommendation is that that not be extended to the McGraws. What they're seeking is a refund of the SAC credit that they have already paid. Dr. McGraw is here and I believe wants to address you. Do you have any questions for me?
Counselor Lehman?
The Apgar projects, they're basically septic systems that are now going on to the regular system.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, Mayor, if follow-up. At one point, Councilor Clay, the council majority at the time, talked about using these credits to get septic systems within the city onto the system to have staff look at that. And I guess staff is working on that now.
It's my understanding correct? You've been, yes?
We're not ready for that yet.
Okay.
You talking the residential SAC credit policy?
Like, old Shakopee areas, let's say you've got, Apgar's a good example.
Okay.
For groundwater issues and stuff.
All right. Counselor Whitey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Leek, isn't the EDA working with this policy currently to formulate something that we could use for an economic development package?
Well, the council actually reviewed and approved the policy that was developed by the Finance Director along with Bruce Loney and myself. And as I think Mr. McNeil indicated, that policy talks about the use of a portion of the SAC credit pool that we have from RAR coming off of the regional system for economic development qua additional job creation and tax base expansion. Remember, there's a portion of those credits that has been reserved for ongoing maintenance and needed reconstruction of the system, and then the portion that is being looked at for potentially bringing properties online that have septic systems. The remainder, which I think is about four hundred credits of that pool
Four fifty.
Under the policy is intended to provide some potential cost participation in the form of those credits where a project is creating substantial job growth or tax base increase. So the policy already exists, council's approved it.
Mr. Loney?
And just one added comment to that is that, in the case of the County Road sixty-nine, parcels over there that we're putting sewer in, in possibly East Shakopee industrial area, use of those credits for incentives to bring sewer in the area in exchange of waiver of assessment appeals, that's what we're looking at. So there, again, is a financial benefit to the city in using these credits in a way that either economic benefit or saving the city and taxpayers a financial benefit.
And you get them off septic systems.
Yes.
All right, before we get much further, can we hear from Dr. McGraw, please?
He pretty well summed it up from what I was told. Other than it was, I believe it was Mike's auto repair that was put on the sewer system from the city, and that is, you know, a similar business to what we have. It's not providing jobs at two and a half times a federal minimum wage, and it's an existing building business, it's not a new business. So there's some requirements that Mr. McNeil had told me that must be, the threshold must be passed, but the Mike's automotive hasn't crossed those thresholds either.
While you're here, can you tell us a little bit about your business? What do you guys do?
I am a chiropractor, and I've been in town for twenty-six years, and we have leased space for all that time. So it would be, you know, a property that would generate property tax. So it would be, the lot was actually purchased from the city, and it was purchased five years ago.
Thank you. Any questions from McGraws? All right. Thank you very much, I appreciate you being here. Thank you. All right, any further discussion of questions? Counselor Lehman?
Just a comment, Mayor. The past council at one point did discuss using SAC credits for infill development in old Shakopee, these empty lots here and there, but it was never adopted, so I think, I think since then we've moved toward kind of getting the septic systems off the system so they're not leaching into the ground and possibly contaminating the groundwater or whatever, but, so that's just a little bit of history, I guess.
Okay. With, we don't have a recommendation if we concur with the recommendation from city staff, so are there any motions that anyone would like to make with regard to this for if we would like to accept SAC credit, or Counselor Whitey?
To my, the way I, no, I know we have a policy with some vague descriptions, and the way I thought this was going to be handled was, we would move this to the EDA, the EDAC to work on a policy that flushes it out a little more, gives us a little more, how we'd use this as a tool, I know we're going to use some for some projects we had talked about, but my thought is maybe this should be looked at as how, how we look, the EDAC takes a look at how we use this policy and gives us some recommendations.
Okay, and...
Mayor, members of the council, in the process of developing the part, the policy that you've adopted, the EDAC did have discussion about what their recommendations would be. So the policy that came to you for adoption had the benefit of their input, and I didn't understand when you adopted it that you were looking for additional input from the EDAC on how to use the criteria that are in the policy. I thought that that would be an issue that would be addressed with each proposal brought to you related to economic development, and obviously there'd be a learning curve about how to apply those policies, but I didn't think it required any additional guidance from the EDAC when you adopted it.
I concur with what you're saying, that's, that was my thought, was that we would, as we, as projects come up, that makes sense for utilizing the SAC credits, that we would evaluate those as they come up, because it's really difficult to put hard definitions on these, I believe. Does that, Counselor Punt?
Plus, the SAC credit may not be an incentive to all development, so it would really depend upon the project and if that incentive would be warranted and at what level assess that.
Exactly. And I'm of the opinion that this project does not necessarily meet what we were intending with the SAC credits. Is there consensus from council that that is the case? Counselor Punt?
I agree with you on that.
Okay, Counselor Lehman?
Well, the policy pretty much that we're working with is trying to get the septic systems within old area of town off the, off that system and into the regular system. Now, the issue that I really have is, if we wanted to use SAC credits for infill, then we should have done that upfront in the policy, which we didn't. So apparently we didn't want to do that. If we're gonna go back in time and give a credit now, I don't know how much exposure we have to that, how much, how many buildings then would we have to go back to and say, okay, they built the building in the last two years? Do we now offer it back and what kind of precedence it sets? So it's kind of a, kind of a sticky issue, actually, to do that.
So you're saying not in favor of this?
The difference, I think it's the clear difference, Mr. McGraw, between you and Mike's, is that he's had a septic system and he's getting off the septic system, getting into a regular sewer system, which is what this body directed staff as what we wanted in a policy. Now, the previous council talked about the infill, which your property is, and having that as part of the policy, but that was never adopted, and this body instead chose the water quality and septic system issue over the infill issue. So I'm kind of stuck on a policy.
I'm not getting where you're trying to go with this.
Well, the policy basically says that we're going to use them to get system, properties that are on a septic system off the septic system over any infill of the smaller lots that we have, you know, on Second Street here or whatever. So septic systems take precedence, and we're not going to do, use them for the small developments on small lots for infill.
Okay.
But we will consider using them on larger projects that have, you know, major job creation or major tax base increase and stuff like that. That was my understanding of the policy.
So what's your feeling on this right now?
It's be inconsistent with the existing policy.
So it's, you're not in favor of moving forward with refunding?
Well, I would be in favor of refunding, but we'd have to change the policy.
It, it's, it's okay?
I don't believe that the votes are here to change the policy.
That's not what we're asking right now. I mean, we can, we can't change the policy for this, but we can look at the policy moving forward. And if that's, if there's a majority council that feels that's necessary, then we can do that, but if there's not a majority, then we don't.
I don't know how you'd go back after the fact and, and contact all these businesses that have built the project and, and what, how many, I don't even know how many there is.
All right, Counselor Clay?
I concur with staff.
Counselor Whitey?
Yeah, I think in my mind, we can't go retroactive, and this is for a bigger scale project in my mind.
All right. So we have majority of council, thank you very much, we're excited that you're, that you came tonight and talked to us, thank you very much for being here. It's not something we can do that makes sense citywide right now, but we're excited about your expansion and hope to hear more about it as we go forward. So is there anything else you guys need from?
I would just say, if there's like four hundred credits there, this is one of four hundred, that's like one-fourth of a percent, and I'd really like to know if there's very many people that...
Could you come up to the mic? If you, if you're gonna, yeah, nobody else can hear.
How do they, a very large number that has been put on to the SAC?
Got it.
New construction in the last six months.
All right, thank you. I appreciate, thank you very much. All right, is that direction?
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item nine F two, Dick sanitation proposal for one sort recycling.
Mr. Mayor, council, as you are aware, garbage and recycling in the area of Shakopee, which is served by municipal sewer and water, is covered by what is called an organized garbage collection system. In that system, you as a city have authorized a single hauler to provide both garbage and recycling, curbside pickups to single-family houses and to apartment units of three units or less. Since nineteen, excuse me, since two thousand and one, the city's been served by Dick Sanitation of Lakeville. There was an additional five-year contract, which was negotiated at the end of that first contractual term. In two thousand and eleven, in exchange for some price guarantees and reductions, there's an additional three-year term set. That is due to expire May thirty-first of two thousand and fourteen. Dick's recently contacted the city about possibility of offering a single sort recycling system. Right now, what we have in Shakopee is called a two sort. You have the blue bin, and people either bundle or bag the paper and cardboard products, and the others are co-mingled in the blue bin. That's picked up weekly. We as staff receive not an inconsequential number of calls requesting to go to the single sort system. That is where you would receive a bin very similar to a garbage one that you currently have with wheels and a cover on it, and with that, all of your recyclables get placed into that bin. It's picked up every other week rather than every week. People that have it seem to like it very well. We knew that this was something that was going to be of interest to a lot of folks, and so we did put this out on the city's Facebook page and also notified the media and the, we had actually relatively a few number of comments, those were distributed earlier tonight, so you can see what is there. I think generally speaking, it, the other advantage of the single sort system is that with a lid, it does eliminate a lot of the wind-blown debris, which seems to happen with the open bin type of container. This project, however, this proposal is not without costs, or eleven thousand customers that Dick services in Shakopee, in order to provide a bin for each of those, there'd be about a one-point-seven million dollar cost. Dick's would have to amortize that. To do that, they have proposed to extend the current contract for an additional five years. The question for you tonight is whether you are interested in doing that and would want to have us negotiate prices for that, or whether you would want to direct that this go out for a proposal as a competitive quote and that it would be brought back to you. If you're going to do that, because of the lead time needed to potentially order eleven thousand bids from some, or eleven thousand, yes, bins from another supplier, we need to provide quite a bit of advanced time on that. We'd be looking at starting that process in early two thousand and thirteen, about a year and a half in advance. David Domek of Dick Sanitation is here to talk more about the process. If you have questions of me, I'd be happy to try to answer those, otherwise I might also ask the same of Mr. Domek. Questions or comments for me?
Mr. Domek?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a little late, and we're going to try to get through this, but what we have seen over the years is a big change in our recycling technology that's out there, and that is the single stream or one sort, as Mark had mentioned. We do get a filter through a lot of the calls, get a lot of the calls from the residents because of the billing and the services and so forth, and one of the most common requests is, when will you start one sort recycling? And so we had, part of what has been concerns in the past about contamination and where everything's going, glass, for example, that has been an issue that was a concern because in the past, glass, broken glass, had been actually landfilled. That was proven fact, I think, three years ago. Well, there are new technologies out there now that deal with these contaminations, such as the glass, which is now taken by a company called E. Collett, that's one of two. They actually have a sorting system that optically looks at the glass that's broken, blows it into the right category, and then it goes off to anchor to be recycled. So the other items or opportunities that we have is we are recycling more plastics, we're recycling more fiber. With all of this, like I had mentioned to Mark, is there's been so much more enhancements in recycling that we've been able to recycle more as opposed to having that material going to landfill. So we are proposing, would like your endorsement, to, I guess, if you want to call it finance this cart investment, we would be purchasing three trucks along with eleven thousand carts, and we would like to enhance the recycling of the citizens of Shakopee.
Any questions?
I guess I have one. Why would you need three more trucks if you're only gonna, if you have a cart that you're going to come every other week instead of every week?
Because the, first of all, there are different types of trucks, they're actually a totally different type of truck, and we rotate every other week, so the three trucks will rotate the routes every, every other week on each day.
Any other questions? Counselor Clay?
Talking about needing to extend the contract an additional three years from its current end date?
That is correct.
So we're talking about May thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
Three years or five years?
It's, it would be, I'm sorry, it's five years from, five years from this date, from the two thousand and thirteen, I think that's what we talked about.
Two thousand and fourteen, correct, expires.
Correct.
So what was the answer?
So it'd be twenty eighteen?
The proposal in your package is for a five-year extension from the current expiration date, which would be May of two thousand and fourteen.
So it would go from today, it would be an additional six years?
From today's date, seven, actually.
Seven, thank you, okay. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'd prefer to just bid it out and, and bid it out both ways, you know, so whoever wants, whichever company wants to bid on it can give us two bids, one for the single sort, one for the regular sort that we have now. And the reason I say that is, I've been pretty consistent over the years, not, nothing wrong with your service, just, you know, free enterprise, this hasn't been bid out in years and years and years, at least
Thirteen.
Time that I've been here, and I think the intent of the RFP process is to, every so often, you give the open market a chance to, to do this process, and it's supposed to bring lower rates to the end users. May or may not, at least it's the right process.
At least we know.
Right.
Right. Any other comments? Counselor Clay?
If we are thinking about then going out for bids, and it takes a year or more to, for whoever gets the next bid, we want to start that process fairly quickly.
Correct. Mr. McNeil?
Mayor and council, I think the decision that you need to give tonight is whether you want to bid it out or not. If you choose to do that, we will be back to you, and we're going to have a number of different options, i.e., do we want to just, you know, bid out the single sort recycling, you want to go with a continuation of what we have? There are a number of different things that do affect the bottom line on it, but we're not prepared to get into that level of discussion, I think just need to concentrate on, is this something that you want to do, take the single sort? If you don't, then just be aware that we'll continue the remainder of this contract through expiration date with the existing two sort system.
Okay. My thoughts are that I feel that single sort is great and where we need to go into the future, but I think it needs to be bid out, which requires waiting another year. And we can get that process started whenever makes sense with input from you guys as to what works best for getting competitive bids and what technology and where the industry is right now, moving into the future. I am, I think it would be irresponsible not to bid it out.
Yeah, and I also don't have a problem with your work or service, but, you know, ten, eleven years, it's time.
Right.
And with all due respect, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we can respect that. One thing that we have as a history, which I will emphasize, is we were one of the proposals that came in at, at one of the highest rates, and what we did is we provided a package, and we worked really hard to work with staff and the residents to provide a quality service at a good value. So all I'd ask, because I'm kind of the incumbent from history, that you understand that least value is, is one thing that we're all about, and I do respect your, your, your considering it.
Perfect, thank you. Is there any additional direction you need from us?
I've heard the three of you say that we need to
Counselor Whitey?
Go for proposals. I also concur, Dick's service has been, had no issues, and you are the incumbent, and that is always considered in all proposals, that we know how your service considered in all proposals, that we know how your service, when, what it does for the city. So, I would, I would move to reject the proposal and move to open bids, request for proposals.
That's five, Mark.
I think we're there.
Based on that, we will bring this information back to you in the upcoming months and give some direction, further discussion.
Beautiful. And thank you again for your guys' hard work. We appreciate it. Item nine F3, June 19th, discussion topic. Mr. McNeil.
Mayor and council, this is one of those that we've, at least the past couple of meetings, had time reserved at the end for discussion of items that are larger than what we'd normally have as a regular agenda item. Unfortunately, both the Finance Director and I will be absent from the next meeting. We do have some suggestions as far as things that might be discussed without the two of us here, not that that will make a huge difference, but we do need some feedback on website design and where we're going with that. Existing website is seven years old, and it's getting rather dusty, so we'd like to get some direction from you before we get into budget. We also have a couple of things, just, you know, some recognitions, that we've got the boards and commissions recognition picnic, that really needs to be looked at. And we also want to get your ideas on some employee recognition programs, whether it's a five-year, 10-year, or 40-year employee. That would be some suggested topics that we might have that could fit easily at the second meeting next month. If you have other thoughts, certainly we're open to those.
It does sound good to me. Any other items that council would like to look at?
You can do administration, since he won't be here.
Some of them take notes. Thank you. All right.
All right.
If that works, we'll put that on the agenda.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, we do have the two items that we removed from consent agenda earlier.
Item five F8, which is no longer a point because we have the park and rec meeting on the 10th. Correct?
But we do, but we do need official action...
Right.
...to reset those two meetings. Independence Day is on Wednesday this year. You'd normally have your first meeting the night before. It's been suggested that maybe you might want to move that to Monday night, July 2nd. Secondly, in August, as is our traditional conflict, we have a national night to unite on August 7th. What we have typically done is moved that to the following Wednesday evening, August 8th. Are there other suggestions or alternatives?
Any issues with these? All right. Entertainer motion. Council Lehman.
Make the motion that the first meeting in July be scheduled for July 2nd, Monday, and the first meeting in August be scheduled to Wednesday, August 8th.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Council Whiting, Mr. Thompson.
Just formally, I think the motion should also be to adopt resolution number 7208, because that's what actually does that.
Very good. Council Lehman, do you agree?
I'll amend my motion to include resolution 7208 on the advice of my attorney.
Council Whiting, you agree?
I'll agree with that in a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number five F9.
Thank you. I asked to have this removed from the agenda, as earlier today I had a request from the prospective donor to have you consider the property taxes on this. You've seen this before. This is a three-and-a-quarter acre parcel of land, actually three different parcels, which is north of Highway 101 and just west of Valley Haven Park there. This has been proposed for donation by Burma High Incorporated. Typically, when there's a change of ownership of property, the property taxes are prorated, and the seller typically agrees to pick up the, whatever portion of the year that he own, he or she owns it, and the buyer then gets the remainder of the year. In the case of property closing on April 1st, the seller would pay 25% of the taxes, since it's three of the 12 months, and the buyer would pick up the rest. In this case, however, this is a donation, so there's no land, there's no money being exchanged. We were aware last week that the donor did not pay the second half of the 2011 taxes and did not pay the first half of this year, so there are some interest monies that have been generated on top of that as well. What we were recommending in the, in the memo was that the city would pick up all of 2012 and that they would pick up 2011. However, in speaking with the donor today, they are asking that you consider picking up all of the past due property taxes. The rationale for this is that this is a valuable piece of property. The taxable assessed value is $535,000. If you look at what the entire amount that would be due, it would be just under $30,000, We had anticipated that if it's, if we were going to pick up all of 2012, it'd be about $18,320. So, that's the question for you tonight. We do have a source of funding for that in the general fund unallocated, but the question is, are you comfortable in picking up the $29,374 as the past due property taxes? Just in terms of the timing on this, we would have had to have the decision made by June 30th of last year for it not to have any property taxes due this year, same way we want to be able to get this closed before June 30th, for it to be tax exempt for taxes payable 2013. Questions? Comments?
Questions? Council Whiting.
This agreement would be taking care about the closing?
It would be prior to closing, but we need some direction from you so that they can put those documents together. The hope is that we'd be able to get it closed yet this week.
Council Lehman.
$30,000?
$30,000.
Value of the property is?
$535,000 according to taxable value.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
And what if we don't?
The donor would have to decide whether they're still interested in donating.
Council Whiting.
So, there's no chance that we pay the taxes and then they decide not to donate?
That would be a condition of, and Mr. Thompson can talk about that, but I don't...
It's part of the closing.
That's what I thought.
Mr. Mayor, that'll all take care of at the closing.
That's what I was going to add.
Thoughts?
You'd save the 30 grand if that happens by firing the attorney.
Yeah. I would, we'd have to do that, I guess, yeah.
We'd have to pay the 30?
We should.
Why should we?
I don't know that we should, but I think that it's...
I concur with him. Yeah, I think 30's reasonable.
All right. Council Lehman.
I just said, yeah, I'm okay with 30 when the value's that much.
That's fine. All right. I am actually not okay with this. Last minute, coming back in and saying that there's an extra $30,000 on the deal, I have a lot of great things we could do for the city with $30,000. And this is, they've known the entire time that this is their responsibility, and we love the fact that it's being donated, but this has been going on for a while now, and there's been plenty of time to have expressed this.
Just for the record, the, I'm sorry. The additional dollars would be about 20,000, because we would have had to pick up half, the second half of 2012 regardless, assuming that the donation was going to be made before June 30th.
Okay.
But still.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
You could even flip that property and have it three times.
I know, it's more the principle of it. Council Clay.
Move to...
Authorize paying all back due property taxes.
Yeah, authorize payment of all undue, or unpaid taxes, second half of 2011, first half of 2012.
If you want to read that.
Authorize payment of the base level property taxes payable in 2012 for lots 2, 3, 4, Block 1, Halo Second Edition, Shakopee, Minnesota, County of Scott, at the time of closing of the donated, or donation of said land to the city.
Have a second?
That, that is, that doesn't include 2011. I think you need to amend the motion to include delinquent 2011.
That would be all... That's what I, the beginning of my motion said.
And then the memo when it was drafted was just for 2012.
I think his motion is correct, though. I think he said that.
He'd take 2011 in the wording of the motion?
I'll second the motion, which included the 2011 balance.
Getting late.
All right. Are you comfortable with that, Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
The reason I really want to proceed with this is, is that if you remember, oh, you didn't, but when we were looking at all the different scenarios for reconstruction of First Avenue before it was done two years ago, there's projections going out 20, 30, 40 years of traffic volumes reaching a point where the current First Avenue right-of-way is not going to be able to handle it. Looking at a one-way, possibly unbluff, going one-way in First Avenue, where they would combine back together, it would be right about where this parcel is, so it'd be one less valuable chunk of land that the city would have to pick up to, and it would also in the interim make a nice off-leash dog park.
There you go.
And the right-of-way would cost us $500,000 at the time to do that in the future.
Oh, yeah.
Good point.
I, I, I don't disagree with any of what you've said. I...
I totally agree with what you said, too, so the principle at the last minute. Yeah.
Right.
I hear you.
I don't think it wouldn't happen.
We'd just back out at the very last minute, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Don't show up for the closing or something.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. It passes four to one with myself, mayor, in dissent. All right. That covers all the items, correct?
Correct.
Item number 10, council member reports. Start with Mr. Whiting.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Clay.
Yesterday at the Utilities Commission meeting, I did extend congratulations to them concerning the award that we were presented tonight for the Highway 101 project, since they did have a significant part of that and with the LED lighting for that project, and they all nodded appreciatively. The, the other thing would be that there, just to mention, there was a, an outage of about 1,100 customers a week or so ago. Turns out that the, the new Pike Lake substation, which just got energized a couple, 30 months ago, had something wired backwards, and finally they had enough current flow to, to trip the breaker on it. It should be covered under warranty or guarantee by the installers of the, of whatever it was that wasn't wired right. But other than that, you know, it's been a fairly, still fairly reliable system. It's, our biggest problem continues to be weather, lightning strikes, and animals.
Squirrels.
Squirrels.
Chickens.
No chickens, just squirrels.
Yet.
Any else?
Nope.
Council Lehman.
Derby Days. I guess what I got out of that meeting, besides the standard planning that they go through, is the public's perception that it's the citizens' tax dollars funding this, which is not the case. The general public needs to understand that this is a nonprofit group of individuals from our community that put this together with donations from the business community of Shakopee and individual citizens of Shakopee, which is tax-deductible, by the way, contribution.
Well done.
And it takes a lot of planning, and it's a five-day event, and what is it, August 1st to the 5th this year? And it's got about 40 different events scheduled, most of them are at Huber Park, but some of them are other locations in town. It's shakopeederbydays.com. So, just clear the air on that and let everybody know that, no, it's not your tax dollars. It's a group that are doing it on their own, so they do need your support, and it is a benefit for the community.
Well done. Council Punt.
I have no report.
Couple things. Memorial Day celebration out of Memorial Park was beautiful. I went to the Memorial Day celebration as, here in town, as well as at the Meadow Park and Sioux community, and that was really nice. So, it was great to be there. Last week, we had Economic Development Process Meeting with bringing in developers and community members and city staff to discuss how we go about economic development, to keep moving that process forward. And then also police swearing in, a couple weeks, a new officer, Mark...
Mike Santos.
Mike Santos, thank you, was sworn in, and so it was a very nice ceremony, and Chief Tate did a great job with it, so. Item 11, any other business? I didn't expect any. Item 12, motion to adjourn to Tuesday, June 19th at 7:00 PM. Council Lehman.
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, the 19th at 7:00 PM.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Senator, Council Clay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. We are adjourned at the 10:22.